I'm ready.
Cancel, uh, sorry, anybody else canceling tonight?
I have one.
You canceling also? Okay, hold on.
I call the committee on ordinance as elections legislative matters to order at seven oh one. Um, I don't have any business to bring out tonight, however, I did ask the city auditor Deb Gould to come down, talk a little bit about the changes due to the municipal modernization act as it relates to the revolving fund ordinance. But before we get going, it was passed along that today is actually Library Workers' Day
Yeah.
as part of National Library Week, April ninth through the fifteenth. So I want to thank all of our library workers who are out there, especially our good friend Paul Dion, sitting in the audience every three days. Um, so thank you to everyone and Joan and team, keep up the great work. Yep, Laura is yours, my friend.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for coming down today and taking the time a couple of weeks ago to meet with me, talk about the changes to the ordinance.
Yeah.
I think this is gonna make a lot of people very, very happy.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not really sure how everybody wants to do this. Um, it's a pretty big ordinance. Um, it's based on the amendments due to the municipal modernization act, which passed on November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, one of which now requires revolving funds established under chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half in towns to have a bylaw and city ordinance, uh, excuse me, in cities to have an ordinance that outline things that we would annually vote every year as part of the budget process. So the ordinance that's in front of you, each, each proposed revolving fund does identify typical things that most of you are familiar with from past years, which would be, you know, the name of the fund, the definition of the fund, where the revenues are derived for that will be accounted for in the fund, and the expenditures that are allowed to come out of that fund. Historically, here in the city of Attleboro, every year as part of the budget process, what's also been voted is the limit or cap, as we refer to it internally. That vote is still required annually by the amended statute, and that will be coming forward from the administration as part of the budget process when that comes downstairs. Um, in addition to the requirement annually for the cap to be voted, um, specifically in the special solid waste revolving fund, and I think we'll go through each fund, you're still going to have to vote the unit amount per unit of the rubbish fee that will go into the specific revolving fund, so that's something sort of unique to that one revolving fund. It's not a percentage necessarily of the overall rubbish fee. It's a unit cost that has been voted annually, and that worked its way into the language of the proposed ordinance, okay, through the city solicitor's office as well. Um, there are a couple of ordinances, uh, excuse me, revolving funds that have been removed, and we can go over those, and a couple of new revolving funds as we go through the list. If you'd like to do it that way, we can kinda discuss.
Yeah, I think if we could go through kind of, um, what you and I went through.
Yep, and, all right, so, um, just to sort of, a little bit of background, um, because of the change in the statute, what happened is I met with the administration to sort of develop a plan on how we were gonna approach what needs to happen for the revolving funds. Obviously, from my perspective, it's very important that I have a clear understanding of what's going to be allowed to be expended out of a revolving fund, what type of revenue can go into the revolving fund, because that's part of the responsibility of my office that we have to make sure those things happen. So I met with the administration to make sure that he was on board with all of the existing revolving funds that we had, were there any suggestions for additional revolving funds, and then reached out to all of the departments that had revolving funds, and either had conference telephone calls with them, meetings in person, sometimes there were group meetings if they involved more than one department. So everybody that has a revolving fund here has had an opportunity to have a discussion specifically with me. I followed up several times with budget and admin and the administration relative to the, you know, how the progress was being done with the revolving funds, as well as the city solicitor Lauren Galvin. So all of the, sort of the background and stuff, if you have some questions, I might have the information that you have. There's, there were pretty broad meetings, and then some very specific meetings that happened on each fund. Um, we evaluated the need for the fund, wanted to make sure that the, if somebody asked for additional funds to go into the revolving fund, if it was appropriate and if it was warranted, obviously taking into consideration the revenue stream of revolving funds, because as everybody here knows, all money goes to the general fund unless there's a specific law that provides for it to go out with. So if you're taking money and putting it into a revolving fund, you've taken money out of the general fund revenue stream, and you potentially have impacted something. So all of that was considered as the revolving fund ordinance was developed. Part of the, um, focus for my office was for clarity, to be certain that the revenue and expenditure streams are clear, and that if I hit the lottery tomorrow, or hit by a bus tomorrow, whoever took my place would be able to read the ordinance and understand clearly what everybody.
Let's go with the lottery, go with the lottery.
You would leave if you were a sudden millionaire?
No, well, maybe, I'd stick around for a very short period of time, but, you know, someplace warm and tropical sun's nice right now, but.
She would have to pay for it.
Just for the party, just stick around just for the party.
Yeah, just for the party, but, I mean, that's important to me. So it was actually, um, really beneficial to have the new city solicitor look at this because she doesn't have the historical knowledge and the context of, you know, so for clarity, she brought a lot of clarity to it and, you know, asked pointed questions about, you know, what about this? So you'll notice in some instances where there are slight changes, it's to specifically add something that historically I know has happened, like the operation of the zoo included salaries. It's part of the budget book, everybody's here familiar with that, but it wasn't obvious to her. So that language has been added, you know, for operations to include salaries, things like that. So that was really beneficial, at least in my world. Um, the proposed ordinance that is in front of you has been reviewed as to form and re, in its entirety by the city solicitor's office, so that has been taken care of. And part of those discussions, one of the things that is important, in two thousand and six, the city had a special act. Under the old version of forty-four fifty-three E and a half, there were limits of how much money any one department could have under his or her control, department head, as well as in the aggregate based against the prior year's levy. Those limits are not in the amended version of the ordinance. In two thousand and six, we requested by special act that those limits be lifted in some respect and raised for the city of Attleboro. Our special act now limits us more than the amended statute. So it's beneficial to the city to remove the special act. And the way that would have to happen is the exact same way that it was in, put into place, which is it would have to be repealed by your body and approved by the mayor, and it would have to go back to the legislature to, for repeal. So in my world, that's the easiest thing to do and the most beneficial because there's not always that special act that somebody helps, has to remember, is out there limiting us. The requirements, as I understand it from the Department of Revenue, historically, this, there was a form that you had to fill out, and you had to in, um, outline the revolving funds, what they were, the limits on them so that you could, you know, compare against those statutory requirements. Those forms aren't gonna be required anymore. So my concern always is, is will somebody remember later on that we have those limits? Obviously, the ordinance would have to be amended to incorporate those limits if we don't repeal the special act, and it hasn't. The, that has not happened because our intention is to ask you to repeal it, and that did come down as part of the communication.
Thank you, Deb.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure, I understand it, I read the memo, it's all kind of complicated.
Yep.
So when we had this before, we'd have a fund, protective inspection services fund, right?
Yep.
And then we'd have, in parentheses next to it, an amount of money,
Yep.
which is the maximum it was allowed to hold at any given time.
Spend in a year without.
They were allowed to spend any fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay, and they could spend up to that amount, no problems, they could not spend above that amount.
Right, and in order to spend more than that, the statute previously and still allows for the person in charge of the revolving fund to return to you for permission to exceed that amount, to go up higher.
And what your, what the new revolving accounts do is they take away that limit of spending in a fiscal year?
That limit still has to be voted annually. So the revolving fund sort of is the fr, excuse me, the ordinance is the framework to reestablish all of these ordinances. So ordinarily, what would happen is, let's, let's use the example that you started with, okay, which is twenty-six oh three.
Yep.
Um, what would happen is that would have come downstairs historically, and it would have said, you know, protective inspection revolving fund, and before that, as, as a group for all of them, it would have said, reauthorization of revolving funds with continuing balances, which meant, as long as that's what it said, the money that was in the fund at the end of the fiscal year, after I closed the books on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, that became your incoming balance for fiscal two thousand and seventeen. With very few exceptions, that's always been the way we've done it here in the city. During the twenty years that I've been here, there have been occasions where the reauthorization was limited. Some of that money was taken, for whatever reason, into the general fund. It may have been because the expense was now going to be borne by the general fund and that kind of stuff. But ordinarily, that's what would happen, it would say with continuing balances. So the structure of the new, or, the new statute doesn't say that you have to do that piece anymore. Automatically, this money is gonna stay with these funds unless the fund is abandoned, and I think it's the standard statutory requirement of three, as you'd have to keep them. But every year, you're still gonna have to say that, that the protective inspection department can spend seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, you may choose in a year to say they're not going to spend anything, and you're not gonna change the ordinance. What would happen is the fund would continue to accrue the revenue, and then you would, you'd have to appropriate the expense out of the general fund, and the result would be the fund, the revolving fund, would start to build up cash reserves, so to speak, in it. And then when you authorized an expenditure in the following year, then they could continue to spend money.
Right, so what you're bringing down is just a change to the form of the ordinance of the revolving accounts.
Yeah, prior to this, there wasn't an ordinance.
What we do every year, which is authorize spending out of the account on an annual basis, would still come before us in a couple months?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that the entire budget package will come down, and it will come down with that. I was actually working on that with the administration today.
Now, what were you saying about us having our own rule that limited us more?
Okay, so the chapter forty-four fifty-three E and a half prior to the municipal modernization act only allowed for the revolving funds in totality to not exceed greater than ten percent of the previous year's levy. So if we have a sixty-five million dollar levy,
Okay.
the total of all our revolving funds,
Combined.
combined, couldn't be greater than six point five million dollars.
Total expenditure annually, or the total amount in them?
Allowed for expenditure.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
Okay.
And in addition to that, no one department could have more than, I believe it was one percent, in a town, three percent in a city. The, the threshold of that percentage, some years ago, we were up against that, up against that percentage for the fire department with the ambulance revolving fund, and they also have the fire false alarm, the fire, excuse me, the false, the fire alarm testing ordinance, excuse, fund. So once you've combined those, we were up against those limits. We did a special act to say we need those to be removed. Unfortunately, with the municipal modernization act, if you have a special act, that doesn't go away. You have to address the special act. So right now, we have a special act that has, that imposes limits on the revolving funds that have been lifted through the municipal modernization act.
And which ones are those?
All of them. It's the, it's the percentages that were in the original statute, and no longer they are. They're silent, there's, they're not there at all, they, they don't have the three percent in the, um, I'm looking to see if I can find.
So Deb, does that mean we can then have as much money as we want in revolving funds, and they can be, they can spend as much as they want, with the exception of the fire department, because we had that act?
So when we had the act, it allowed for the limits to be increased for everybody. It wasn't limited to the fire department.
Okay.
Okay, because it was a, a special act that just changed it for the entire city. Interestingly enough, if you actually go back and look at our special act, we only changed one of the percentages. We changed the departmental limit, but not the aggregate limit. It was, you know, I think it was an oversight, and honestly, it didn't matter in the aggregate anyway, because we weren't gonna get there. So right now, by having those limits, by, through the special act, we're limiting ourselves to something that you can do annually anyway by limiting how much, um, you as an, as the legislative body are going to say, you can spend seventy-five thousand dollars out of the protective inspection revolving fund. If they have a really banner year, and they're bringing in more money in fees, and they need to increase that cap, which they had to do last year, you did that for us last year, close to year end, we had a meeting and realized, oh wow, we're, we're right there. It was sixty-five thousand, you went to seventy-five thousand. This legislative body right now has the ability to address it in-house internally. If the limits from the special act aren't removed, at some point, we may hit those limits and then have to address them. So to me, it makes no sense to keep the special act in force.
So does this remove that special act, or would that be a different motion?
It's a, it's a different motion, I believe it was right after this, it was the, the very next motion that came down in the communication. So it's part of the package of, hey, we, we definitely need this done. This ordinance, as drafted, if your honorable body decided, look, we wanna keep the special act, we wanna keep the limits on the city, and if we ever reach those, we'll have to address the special act at that point. If you wanted to do that, that's not incorporated in this ordinance. We would have to probably revise the ordinance in some way, shape, or form, because by reference, it's the only place somebody would know to go look for it.
So my question is revising the ordinances in, in form, and I think my question is through the chair to President Cook. Um, I believe the municipal council can change the language of these individual revolving accounts. So in the case of prospective, uh, protective in services that lost a part-time person last year, could we put in that their fund could be used to restore salary?
I don't believe so.
We can't, the municipal council can't do that.
I don't believe we can.
So we cannot change the allocation, the manner of the allocation of the funding.
I don't believe we can.
Can we change the percentage of the, of the, of the allocation of the funding?
I, I, and for a.
For example, in municipal, in protective services, five, sixty-five percent of the fee paid, uh, goes to the protective services. What if we wanted to make that a hundred percent?
So specific to that question,
Yep.
the sixty-five percent is because in another ordinance, there's an individual who actually gets the sixty-five percent of the fee. So that, the person that's getting that sixty-five percent is not an, an employee of the city of Attleboro.
Correct, it's an independent contractor.
Right, and the, there, the electrical inspector, who is a, an employee of the city of Attleboro, years ago, the electrical inspection fee was part of the revolving fund. That fee came in there, and when you, when the analysis was done, it actually was less expensive. The, the city made more money, having the revenue come to the city and pay the cost of the electrical inspector. One thing I'd really like to caution everybody on relative to employees and salaries out of revolving funds, a couple of critical points. If a full-time employee is paid for out of a revolving fund, their fringe benefits have to follow out of the revolving fund. It is an absolute must. It's required in the statute, and you'll look in the ordinance, the first section where it says twenty, it says, A, fringe benefits of full-time employees whose salaries or wages are paid from the fund shall also be paid from the fund. Okay, that's a requirement under the statute. The other concern I have as city auditor is, in, in these funds, another requirement is you cannot incur liability in excess of the actual dollar amount in the fund. So, what does that mean? It means if you said, we're gonna hire somebody, and we're gonna make them get paid out of this fund, and there's not enough money in that fund, and they try to cut a paycheck out of that fund, I'm holding that person's paycheck. I can't sign the warrant legally,
Yep.
because I'm in excess of an appropriation.
Yep.
So you really have to be careful when you shift those kinds of things. Again, the basic premise of municipal finance is, all money goes to the general fund unless there's a reason for it to go someplace else. So if you increase a percentage here in the revolving fund, the corresponding reduction has to take someplace else. If fifty percent of a fee is going in here, the other fifty percent, by definition, has to be going to the general fund, and it's supporting an expense.
No, my question was more along the lines of, take, take for example, the off-street parking fund.
Yep.
Fifty percent of it goes into the general fund, fifty percent goes towards the cost of operating the off-street parking enforcement.
Yes.
If we were to say, okay, let's leave fifty percent to the off, the off-street parking enforcement, but we want to target the other fifty percent specific to road repairs.
The thing you have to be careful, we'd have to run it by the city solicitor, because there has to be some nexus between the two things. There has to be a relationship between the revenue going into the revolving fund and the expense. So am I saying it's out of the realm of possibility? I'm not saying that, I'd say if you wanted to address some of those things, we would have to look and see if it, if it could happen through the solicitor's office. So, for example, two of the funds that were in existence in the original draft that was presented to the city solicitor have been removed. One because a matter of law, she said there's a more appropriate statute, but that, unfortunately, that statute, which is chapter sixty, section fifteen B on the tax title, doesn't re, uh, doesn't really meet all the requirements of what we had for a revolving fund for the tax title. You can't put rental receipts in that type of fund under the statute. So we'd have to find out if whatever it is that we wanna do would meet the criteria and say it's okay through the solicitor's office.
Okay, so now I've got the practicals from Mr. President. So if, if on the floor, I wanna amend the off-street parking fund, revolving fund, so the fifty percent goes to the operation of the off-street parking fund management, and fifty percent of the, the other fifty percent goes specifically with chapter ninety dollars to fix road repair. Um, we can't, we can't second that motion and vote that motion in without it being approved by the solicitor.
Right, and I think at the same time, the, the other thing to keep in mind while, while we're doing this, you know, I, I can see that, you know, the temptation to go in and start to adjust some of these revolving funds based on our, what we get during the, you know, during the budget process, could be, could be very great. But I would think that if there's any, any discussion of changing these, we shouldn't be waiting, as we did last year, on the floor, then I would vote in the budget to be doing these.
Right.
Obviously, we need the, you know, opinion of the city solicitor,
Yeah, it's really.
but these should be heavily discussed during committee time, or when that particular opponent's before us.
Well, it's even too late to do this now.
Well, what I would suggest is, if there are specific, um, changes you'd like to see, email me, you can go through, can email me, I can get in touch with, uh, the city solicitor to find out what we can do. The other thing I wanna point out, because I think they're very valid concerns, um, but I think it's important to note that the collaboration amongst the department heads that have their revolving, um, funds, uh, their revolving accounts, the administration, the auditor, the city solicitor, I think this has been pretty well vetted, not to say that there isn't something that we could probably try to, to look at to potential. But if you wanna get that to me, because we still have to call for a public hearing on this, so this isn't anything that's gonna be decided tonight. What I wanted to do is get, um, the city auditor down here to really go over what the premise was behind the change, why we're making the change, what impact that's gonna have. I think these are good questions that we have time to still get those answers to.
So you're not gonna vote this out of committee tonight?
Not tonight, no. What I wanna do, and, um, we'll talk about this once, um, Deb is done, I'm gonna call for a public hearing. Um, and we can, um, get some information.
Yes, uh, Miss, oh.
Miss Paul, and then, sorry.
Thank you, no, I appreciate it, um, because I'll forget, so I appreciate that. Personnel costs, that's something I didn't, I, I was just grasping the last time we talked about this, and I, and I think I understand what you're saying, and how important it is. Um, when you do have a revolving fund, and, and correct me if I'm misstating this, what you said about the salaries, and everything has to follow, is why oftentimes the salaries are handled outside of the revolving fund, is that correct?
I would say that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Because if you paid an employee, and there have been times that that's happened, so the off-street parking meter revolving fund, um, a percentage of the parking clerk's salary came from this fund, and at one point, they, there wasn't enough money that was going to be able to sustain that, that had to shift back to the general fund. That expense wasn't here out of this fund, the revenue stream continued into this fund, and pieces of it could have shifted back. But that is not unusual for that to happen, which is why it becomes very concerning, like, hey, we have to watch out, where are we with the money and stuff? Because I legally cannot sign a warrant and release a check out of the revolving fund if there's not enough money. I can't even sign a purchase order if there's not enough money. So some of these funds, you know, there are times where I'm like, you need to go back and renegotiate your agreement with that vendor, because you have insufficient funds. Last year, you, you saw some expenses move from the solid waste revolving funds into the general fund budget for that very reason. I just wanted to, um, make one point, if you do change the percentages, let's say you change something from fifty percent, and you rededicate it, you set a hundred percent, you can't dedicate this revenue into another fund. It has to be into this fund, and you'd have to change the scope of what the expenditure could be. And the reason I bring that up is you said, you know, we'll use this money for chapter ninety revenue. You can't put revolving fund money under forty-four fifty-three E and a half into the revolving fund. You can't put revolving fund money under forty-four, fifty-three, E and a half into the revolving fund. You'd have to keep it in this fund. That's the whole point of the revolving funds.
But, if I may?
You may.
But that confuses me a little bit because the intent was that parking revenues were to go into road repairs. It might be parking lot road repairs.
And that's an allowable expense under this revolving fund?
Well, it would have to be added.
It is. The parking lot is there. It says improved city-owned parking. Right, so I just want to make it clear that you can't say, we can't add money to a chapter ninety fund. Chapter ninety money is only chapter ninety money. I just, you know what I mean, I just.
That's my mistake. I should have said chapter ninety.
No, I just want to be clear, because that's what I heard. You, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand. If you're going to change a revenue stream here, you're changing the percentage here, something else, there will be a trickle effect elsewhere. But you can only change it in this. You can't say, oh, we're gonna, like, you, and another thing to make sure. No donations, okay? Donation money can't come in here. That's not allowed. Because you have to make sure that donation money is accounted for. You, you say, yes, they can spend it if it's a grant or that kind of stuff. So, there are limitations on the type of revenue that can go into this fund, excuse me, these funds.
I think this is an important discussion to have because I think it illustrates the importance that this is a very complex ordinance. And as Deb pointed out, we have a couple that were removed, a couple that were added, a couple that have some changes. Any questions you have, get it to me as soon as you can. I'll get the answers, and I'll get it out to everyone as soon as we can. I think it's important that we're asking these questions. I think Council Conchi's question was the right question to ask. It's, it sparked a good conversation, and we need to make sure that we're getting this right. Vice President Denly, then Councilor.
I just didn't.
Vice President Denly, then.
Finished my question.
Go for it.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't finish my question, that's why. No, that's okay. I, I know, you got, you got things, you got things on your, and you had to get them out, and I appreciate that. Because I do the same thing. So, can you tell me how, so that, that the revolving funds that don't include the salaries, do we have any that totally, in other words, do we have any revolving funds that cover everything, including salaries, or do the majority of them not cover salaries? So, the majority, in other words, the point I guess I'm saying is that, are most of the salaries covered in the general fund because of that reason? Okay, so the revolving funds, you know, aren't fully, they're not fully funding the whole program, and which I think was a misunderstanding that I had last time. And, and they're, they're not, and you have to kind, and that's what I'm saying, I have to remember that as I go along, is that they're not, that there is another big, huge portion of that that is being funded by the city. So, you have to be careful that you don't.
Right, when it's salary-related. However, it depends on the, the clean, the cleanest, clearest revolving fund that operates perfectly, so to speak, in most respects. There's a little bit of difference. Is the protective inspection fund. Somebody comes in, they pay a permit. If they pay a hundred-dollar permit, sixty-five dollars of that permit, if it's under this particular thing, goes into the revolving fund, and an equivalent sixty-five dollars goes out to that contractor. That, the, it's not contractor, the gentleman who is the inspector.
Right.
Okay, so that is an automatic, that sixty-five-dollar revenue is covering the sixty-five-dollar expense.
Right.
Yet, you have a zoo revolving fund. A lot of revenues collected through the gift shop, the concession stands, the admissions, and some other things that have been added, so that they'll be cleared tonight. Those revenues come in, and there are salaries paid for out of that zoo revolving fund. One hundred percent of the employees of the city of Attleboro that take care of Capra and Park Zoo are not paid for from the revolving fund. There's, some of them are, some employees are, and on, at varying percentages. So, if, if an employee is a point-five FTE from the revolving fund, full-time equivalent, and the other point-five comes from the general fund, fifty percent of the fringe has to follow. So, I hate to say it, depends, but it does depend. Some, in some cases, a lot more salary for a particular position is paid for out of a revolving fund, depending on the revolving fund. So, I personally think the city of Attleboro has done well with revolving funds and the administration of revolving funds annually under the old statute. They came down annually to the council. The council had an opportunity to look at them every year, make adjustments with, between the council and the administration if they so choose and stuff like that. This ordinance is a requirement under the Municipal Modernization Act and the amendment to the statute. I think that we might be back here a year from now saying, hey, we need to tweak this, this piece didn't work. You know, it's long-term, and that's the framework that this was developed under, but I can see there being changes because this is something new that we have to sort of operate under.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Denly.
I didn't realize you weren't done with your question.
It's okay, no, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Denly, for also, thank you.
So, Deb, you actually clarified one of my questions as well, so let me repeat to make sure I understand it. You can pay a salary on like a prorated basis out of a revolving fund, the fringe benefits just have to be paid on that same prorated basis?
Right.
Okay. Can, do you know, off the top of your head, if not, you can email Ken, send to us, which funds currently cover salaries?
Yep.
Is it a majority of them, is it a couple of them?
Um, so. You want to start going through them?
Well, can we?
Because as we go through them, I can tell you.
We're going to go through them?
Yeah, unless you guys don't want to. I mean, I'll do whatever you want.
And then I guess, before we go through them, can you just say which ones were eliminated?
Yes.
Because I assume we won't go through those.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so the two funds that were eliminated, weren't eliminated, were the tax title revolving fund. The tax title revolving fund was under the control of the treasurer's office, the city treasurer. The revenue that would go into that fund was sort of, I don't want to use the word surplus, but revenue that was in excess of a tax, when, if a tax title, if a property taken through tax title for foreclosure proceedings was auctioned off, and the, the receivable and expenses that were borne by the general fund were covered, and there was excess revenue, that revenue could have gone to this revolving fund. And that revenue would have helped to pay for tax title filings, recordings, research, you know, all of that type of stuff. Title rundowns, you know, sale costs for an auction, a future auction, and stuff like that. That's what that could have been used for. In addition to that, there have been properties that the city of Attleboro owned through, that came into the possession of the city through the tax title and foreclosure process that were rented. So, that rental income also followed under that revolving fund to better that property. In some cases, it was a brownfield site, you've done appropriations in separate funds in order to remediate those sites. So, that money was there. Under the review from the city solicitor, she said that, you know, there's a new statute that we could address for the rental income if we so choose, and there's also a different statute that would be for the, more appropriate for the tax title stuff. I've had some meetings with the city treasurer. At this point in time, we're not proposing acceptance of chapter sixty, fifteen B because it doesn't meet all the requirements of what we needed anyway. The rental income can't go in there. Once you start rededicating rental income, and right now, we have no properties that were taken in that fashion that are being rented. So, that's not being addressed right now. It's under consideration, but not something that we're moving on or anxious to move on at this time. What's important is two other things relative to tax title. If an appropriation isn't sufficient enough in the general fund, and it's by understanding that the city treasurer is going to ask for funds to make sure that she can accomplish what she feels is what she needs to do. If that didn't come to fruition for some case, in some respects, whether it was caught here, the administration didn't provide for enough money, whatever that case may be, it is an item that I believe can be raised on page two of the recap, tax title stuff. So, unless that's changed, and I didn't look under the modernization, but to my knowledge, it's still something that could be added. So, there is a way to address that. The second revolving fund that isn't being renewed is the K-9 revolving fund that had to do with the marijuana fines. Marijuana is now legal. It was kind of interesting because it was one of the funds that Chief Hagney and I had spoken about at the beginning of this process, and we weren't going to renew it. He had suggested, you know, I don't really know if we need it, there's not, you know, we don't have a K-9 unit right now, and the marijuana fines, it's really not something that's worth it. You technically can still fine people under a civil infraction for smoking marijuana on city property, right? So, the fine isn't completely eliminated, but people are paying the fines, and you, it's much different today. And the city solicitor, after her review and the changes in law relative to marijuana, she said, mm-mm. She wasn't comfortable with that revolving fund. If we collect any of that, that revenue will go to the general fund. So, those are the two that were eliminated. There's two brand-new ones that have been added. One, again, is a result of discussions with the police chief. It's the fingerprint ordinance that the city has on its books. I think it's sixteen, sixteen four, I think it is.
Twenty-six nineteen.
Sixteen nineteen?
Twenty-six nineteen?
Two-six-one-nine.
Thank you. So, there's an existing ordinance on the books, city ordinance sections fifteen dash six-point-four, where we have fees collected in order for people to do certain, achieve certain licenses in here in the city. I'm honestly not as familiar as I should be with it.
Like Hagney carriage drivers licenses and stuff like that, hawkers and peddlers licenses, yes.
That ordinance that was developed requires the fingerprint identification verification trust fund. We have to collect certain monies. That money has to go to this fund. You have to set aside money to pay for this stuff. So, when we were looking at, you know, how can we achieve this, what's the best way to do this, right now, that revenue is going into and out of, excuse me, just into an agency account. It's not going to the general fund. This solves all sorts of problems. There, the police department's been working for a very long period of time getting the appropriate documentation in place with the federal government in order to be part of this fingerprint system on the federal level that you can have the right stuff. There's requirements in that agreement that having it as a revolving fund sort of solves, and it puts aside enough money so that they can do the future administration of that program. So, in this respect, this ordinance was a great thing. As we're developing that, we're like, oh, you know what? This can address and solve that problem that we need to address with that particular account. So, this is a new ordinance. No salaries expected to come from this fund.
So, the connection here is that the fee people pay to get fingerprinted would go to help the administration of the fingerprinting system?
Yes.
And what percent is going into that? A hundred?
Right now, a hundred percent of the fee that's collected, I believe, is going into the agency account. And that fund has been around for some years, but it's not significant money that has gone into that fund. To, in total, that's been collected into that account, rather I should say, is one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars since inception. The problem is, is that I can't, I couldn't send it out anyway yet because I didn't have all of the rules and regulations from the federal piece.
But the amount of money's not substantial.
It's not substantial. I think it's like fifty dollars is the fingerprinting ordinance. I have to pull the ordinance. That's what I'm looking for.
It's fifty. I wrote it.
Yeah, oh, you did? Okay, so it's fifty dollars, but there's a portion of that that can be retained by the city to help defray the cost of administration. So, that, that fund will be established, and we'll be able to achieve what the chief needs to do for his program, and it will be kind of clear to everybody where the revenue goes, and it won't go, yeah, sorry, fifteen point six. I tried to bring everything I could, and I think that it's all, that's all it is, is fifty dollars. Yep, fifty dollars. A portion of the fee, thirty dollars, as specified by Mass General Law, chapter six, section one-seventy-two B and a half, shall be deposited into the firearms fingerprint identifica, identity verification trust fund. The remainder of the fee, twenty dollars, shall be retained for the city, excuse me, by the city for costs associated with the administration of the fingerprint system. So, as the fifty dollars are collected, right now, we had no methodology to actually give, no, we couldn't give the money to the fingerprint identification system until this other agreement was addressed. That has now been addressed, so we'll be able to move forward and do what the ordinance says. We've been collecting the money as mine, as I understand it, but we haven't been able to divvy the money up, and there will be expenses associated with us that this revolving fund should be able to help address.
Thank you.
Deb, is the Conservation Commission under different financial guidelines that they cannot have a revolving fund?
It's not that they can't have one, but they actually have a number of special revenue funds on the books. Those are under forty-four, fifty-three G. Most of those are specific to consulting services. So, they have a wetlands protection fund on the books. We have a ordinance for that. That's fund twenty-five oh nine. They have a notice of intent fund on the books that achieves some stuff through their non-wetlands protection fund fees go into that. They also have stormwater management fund.
Okay, but they just got a windfall decision on their behalf of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it should have been a quarter billion, I don't know. And they came to us to have it apportioned, so much to this conservation effort, so much to that conservation effort. If there was a revolving fund and they had a, another, no.
Only because the money that you were able to apportion, if you go back and look at the agreement that was done through the settlement, that piece that is being apportioned now, the eighty-five thousand dollars that just came down to the council, or thereabouts, that's because that was the donation, and the donation can't go into a revolving.
If there was, if there was a, a revol, oh, I see.
So, they, they received a, they received a settlement.
Kind of stay on point. I understand.
No, but I mean, if there was a revolving fund for the Conservation Commission, they could refuse a donation.
You can't put a donation in a revolving fund.
No, no, but they could refuse the donation and impose a fine.
You can't.
Or judgment.
So, donation, I, I just want to see if I can get this clear in my head. Don, donation money cannot go into a revolving fund. So, if you go, if you.
Stick to, stick to the point, because he wants to stay on point. The Conservation.
Wasn't, that money wasn't, that was a donation. And when that agreement, the settlement agreement with WB Construction came before your honorable body, written into the agreement from the city solicitor's office specifically said, this much money will be, will go to the Conservation Commission because they, that, because WB is going to donate it to the city.
But if we had a revolving account before that decision, couldn't have gone to a revolving account.
Not a donation.
No, no, because it wouldn't be a donation. It would be.
An exaction, which would have to go to the general fund.
What I'd like to do is just.
Or a special rev, or a stabilization fund.
I think that's a discussion for a different day, because what I want to do, this is muddy enough already.
Yep.
So, what I'd like to do is go through, if we could just talk specifically about where we have some of the changes into the new revolving funds. And I think that that's something that Deb, maybe you and I could follow up on is the question of the conservation revolving fund. Add a date.
Sure. Where do you want to start? You want to start at the first one?
Yeah, why don't we start with the first one and just kind of go through that? Thank you.
Yep, so fund twenty-six oh one, police replacement of vehicles fund, obviously specifies the name. The revenue stream going into this fund is exactly the same as it was voted last year in the vote that was taken by the municipal council to establish the revolving fund last year. The fifty percent of the income from the traffic fines collected from the city of Attleboro District Court and the Massachusetts Registry of Motor Vehicles, one hundred percent of the proceeds from the disposal of surplus police vehicles and vehicle-related equipment, and one hundred percent of fees charged for the use of police vehicles on traffic details. So, there's no change to that part of the revolving fund. There's also no change to the expenditure portion of the revolving fund. That was under the control of the police chief with the approval of the mayor. It, the funds can be used in support of traffic enforcement and for the purchase and maintenance of police department vehicles and vehicle-related equipment.
Question. So, if the police chief wanted to buy ammunition out of the revolving fund, it's your department would say, no, that's not allowed use.
Yep.
So, so, there's, there's no wiggle room for him or that, for anyone in using any of these funds to stray far away from the purpose of the expenditures.
Right, and if I didn't, if it wasn't clear to me what the purpose of the expenditures were, I'd come back here and ask you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
So, for clarification purposes, you asked if salaries could come out of this account. It hasn't happened in many, many years, but the, in support of traffic enforcement has been used when they had some dedicated slap teams and stuff like that in the city. They, they have paid salary, not salaries, overtime, because there's no fringe that follows either, remember that, okay? So, if it's overtime costs or a stipend cost, that, there isn't a base fringe for health insurance, so that's different. So, that, that has happened, and that would be, as, I would interpret that as an allowable expense, but bullets, ammunition, out, not allowed. For clarification to everybody, and because later on, you'll see that there are some changes and stuff, on fund twenty-six oh one, after the books are closed at the end of fiscal two thousand and seventeen, you know, all of the expenditures accounted for, the crude liabilities, everything's taken care of. Whatever is in that fund at the end of fiscal two thousand and seventeen would become the incoming balance in fiscal two thousand and eighteen. And then, consistent with the stat, the language of the statute, the, the fund balance would stay with this fund on an ongoing basis. It wouldn't be swept annually anyplace, okay?
It looks like you added that language to each of the revolving accounts. Is that true?
I did, because, yep. That reason and the reauthorization language that historically has happened here in the city. So, that, I wanted to make sure that things were, tried to be as consistent as what we've historically done as possible.
If we don't use it all, it just rolls over to the next one.
Yep, yep. It becomes important with the two new funds where their starting balances are coming from, too, okay? The two new funds, that fingerprint we talked about.
That makes sense when we get there, right.
It makes sense when we get there. Off-street parking fund, I believe, just so you know, I think the name of that one has changed. We've clarified the name of that. So, the off-street parking meter fund, that is under, the parking clerk is under the, structurally here in the city on the org chart, that's under the Director and Budget and Administration. They can incur, the revenue stream is fifty percent of the income generated from parking fees and fines for parking violations would go into this fund. That's consistent with what it was last year, there's no change to that. The parking clerk with the approval of the Director of Budget and Administration and the mayor may incur liabilities against and spend money from the fund in support of parking enforcement and to maintain and improve city-owned parking areas. The parking enforcement includes the clerk. Right now, I don't believe the salary is coming from there. I'd honestly have to go back and look, isn't that terrible? But the, we do have an outside company and there, there's a person, but that person is not an employee of the city of Attleboro, okay? So, we can, I'm just going to look real quickly to see if salaries come out of there so that you have an answer to your question. Right now, no salary-related items are coming from that fund, okay? The twenty-six oh-two. Twenty-six oh-four, the special solid waste revolving fund. This is, oh, I skipped twenty-six oh-three, I apologize. We've talked a little bit about that. The Protective Inspection Service Fund, twenty-six oh-three. The revenues are sixty-five percent of the fees paid for plumbing, gas, and electrical inspection permits when needed to be performed by an outside contractor. The purpose and expenditure for the fund would be, the builder, the inspector of buildings with the approval of the mayor, may incur liabilities against and spend money from the Protective Inspection Service Fund, number twenty-six oh-three, for the cost of professional services as established by ordinance for pointed plumbing and gas inspectors and alternate, and all alternate inspectors. We do have alternate inspectors that we pay a flat fee for, I believe it's twenty-five dollars, when there's a conflict. So, in those instances, when the person pays the hundred dollar fi- uh, fee, the sixty-five dollars would continue to go into this fund and twenty-five dollars would go out for the alternate inspector. You basically have a net gain in the fund, it's not substantial overtime. And in instances when you have large building permits that you have to pull and people all of a sudden say, oh, you know what, we don't want to have to pay that sixty-five percent to that inspector, I believe we've lost that in court about twenty years ago. So, you know, that, that comes up every once in a while where people are like, oh, we shouldn't have to pay it. There are instances in which our inspectors do the inspections over and over again for the same sixty-five dollars and in instances where it seems like they're getting a windfall, we've lost that battle before, okay? So, just wanted to make that point known. There are no salaries that come out of that revolving fund, okay? There are the contractor fees, but in my world, I wouldn't consider that a salary, there's no fringe that follows. They're not employees of the city of Attleboro. So, there's no significant change there. Twenty-six oh-four is the residential solid waste disposal fund. The slight change to the revenue, you'll note at the end of the revenue section. You can, all right, so let me read it. It says, "The city auditor shall establish residential, the residential solid waste disposal fund as a separate fund and credit to the fund an amount voted annually by the honorable municipal council per unit of the solid waste fee." That will be coming to your honorable body as part of the budget to say how much of the annual rubbish fee is going to go into this fund. It will be a specific dollar amount. That's something that the administration knows they're going to have to do every year. That's a slight change because historically, that's all just come down to you with the dollar amount in it. The ordinance refers to you doing that annually. In addition, any of the fees paid for special solid waste disposal and recycling programs and all income generated from the sale of rubbish bags. Up to that point, it's consistent with last year. The new verbiage is, and compost will be credited to the fu- credited to the fund. It is my understanding that the health department continues to look at potential ways to reduce the compost pile that's over there, one of which might be to sell the compost. If that happens, that money would stay with this revolving fund. So, there's that change to the language and I want to emphasize the unit price being voted annually. And then, on the expenditure side, if you looked at the historical language for this fund, there were two department heads in this fund, you know? In my world, you know, when you work with these people for as long as I have and you had Sonny here for fifty-eight years and, you know, Alan's been here a long time, it all works, you know? But it's not an ideal model in an ordinance to have something that everybody just gets along, so everything's okay. When you have the opportunity to straighten it out, I think it's best to do so. And you'll notice that there's a slight change in the language that the, in addition, this, the superintendent of Parks and Forestry shall provide operational support and staff as needed for the operation of the compost site. So, the Park and Forestry Superintendent can't spend money out of the revolving fund, only the health department can. So, yes, they have to work together and do all that, but in my world, it's much better that you only have one person with a hand in trying to manage and spend money. So, that's a, that's a change that I specifically requested, so that you're aware of that. You'll notice that there is the operational support and we do obviously include salaries out of that fund. So, that was specifically added because the, for clarity purposes with the city solicitor. I think those are the only changes in that fund, but, so salaries do come out of that fund for point of reference to everybody, okay? Yes, sir.
Which, which salaries?
That I would have to actually pull the budget book and say.
Don't worry about now, but can you just send an email later?
Yep, so you want to know salaries out of that fund.
Well, that's a big issue.
Can, can you just do that for all accounts that salaries come out of, even prorated salaries?
Yeah, I can send something that just says what positions, yep, and they're in the budget book. So, just, I'll, I'll do that, that's not a problem. But just so you know, if a salary was coming out of revolving fund, it was part of the budget presentation that would have come in here. And then, what I'll also do, even if it's not a salary, I'll give you information that lets you know, like, okay, overtime or this particular type of thing does come out of there, because there are some stipends that come out of these funds and that type of stuff, okay?
And my, my other question, which I'm sure occurred, I just want to make sure, is you, Mr. Perry and Mr. Walsh both know about this and are both.
We were all in the same room together.
All right.
Yep. I, I still have to work with these people tomorrow, you know? Yeah, so, you know what, I, I need to say that, so if I have, if I can have just a minute to say that.
Yeah.
The departments were great about, you know, sharing what they thought, you know, you know, they asked, I thought, some really insightful questions. Some of them got answers like, I'm sorry, you can't do that, it moves too much money out of the general fund or I'll at least ask the administration on your behalf, but, you know, typically, the answer to that type of thing is going to be no. They brought forward some other really good points and made sure to clarify the language. And I learned some stuff. I learned about the compost that they, you know, they actually had done some compost stuff that my office missed. I'm like, ooh, you had, how is this? Like, we need to straighten that out. That money, I believe, didn't go here, it went to the general fund and it was one time, a couple of years ago. But that spurs other conversations about like, you know, sales tax, you know? We make sure like all of those things are buttoned up and stuff. So, it was a pretty comprehensive review and, I mean, I think the departments benefited from it, but I certainly did as well to make sure like everything's happening the way I think it should happen. So, I was pretty pleased with that and the cooperation of everybody. Council on Aging, twenty-six oh-six, is the next revolving fund. The revenues, we clarified that sponsorships are allowed. Sponsorships, occasionally, there'll be somebody that sponsors a program at the, at the Council on Aging to have an event or that type of stuff. We're not considering that a donation because a straight donation cannot go into the revolving fund, that has to be accounted for elsewhere. The biggest reason to not have donations go into the revolving fund is I need to make sure if you donate a hundred dollars to the city of Attleboro to buy a blue widget, that that's what happens with your money. And I can't do that in a fund that the money can be closed out to the general fund or it can do anything else, you know what I mean? So, donations don't go into revolving funds and that's one of the biggest reasons why. I need people to understand out there in the general public, if you make a donation to the city of Attleboro with a stipulation or stipend, we make sure that that stipulation and stipend is adhered to or the council doesn't accept the money and it would go back, do you know what I mean? So, that's important. I think people think, oh, I send money to the city and then, you know, it just, it never happens when they want to. We do, we're very vigilant about that. So, donation money can't go in here, but sponsorships for a particular program is okay. That was in addition to the language and that was at the request of Madeline McNeely and Darlene Young during that discussion. The expenditure side is exactly the same as it was in prior language. Twenty-six oh-seven, the zoo, everybody's familiar with the zoo, the zoo's a pretty big revolving fund. So, the revenue stream, the city solic- there's been some changes. So, the specific addition to the revenue stream is we added fees for programs in support of AZA animal conservation programs. The rest of the language relative to the revenue stream is exactly as it has been historically, which reads, "The city auditor shall establish a Capren Park Zoo Fund, number twenty-six oh-seven, as a separate fund and credit to the fund all fees paid for the admission to Capren Park Zoo, income from the gift shop, concession operations, and education programs from individuals or organizations in support of the operation of Capren Park Zoo, and fees for programs in support of the AZA animal conservation program." That's an addition. That addition was at the request of the zoo director and that has to do with their AZA accreditation program. Things that came up through the accreditation that were highlighted to them, things that they need to do better and their conservation efforts in support of the species survival plan was one of them. So, they are developing a program where you could come in and maybe do an education program and learn more about lemurs and I'd pay a fee for that. I'd come in, my own money, volunteer, voluntarily sign up and say, I'll pay a hundred dollars to sit through the class on lemurs knowing that a portion of the seventy-five dollars, that, a portion of the seventy-five, a hundred, whatever the fee is, I don't know what it is. It hasn't been finalized yet, whatever that fee would be, a portion of the fee that I willingly pay would go in to support lemur species survival plan efforts. And that conservation of the lemurs, which might be in Madagascar, might be any place around the world, might be a local thing, whatever it is, it could be in the state, that's helped support that species would help the zoo meet its AZA accreditation standard for future accreditations. So, we're not allowed to support the, you know, those types of programs through the tax base because that's against the constitution of the Commonwealth. But this type of thing is allowed, the city solicitor specifically vetted it and we had more than one discussion and meeting on that. So, I just want to make that point clear. The purpose and expenditures are to sup- uh, the zoo director with the approval of the superintendent of Parks and Forestry and the mayor may incur liabilities against and spend monies from Capren Park Zoo Fund, number twenty-six oh-seven, for the operation of Capren Park Zoo, including salaries, although his salaries have been coming out of there for years, I believe. The city solicitor said, let's specifically say including salaries, so everybody understands that. And for capital upgrades to the zoo, that's, that's new. I added that. I'm like, you know, they, they use this money to do capital stuff, I know that, we all know that, but the next person might not. So, let's specifically say capital upgrades to the zoo. And in support of AZA conservation programs and organizations related to the zoo species survival collection. So, those are the changes to that. Those, again, the expenses clarified that salaries are allowed, added capital upgrades for the zoo and added the conservation program and organization programs related to zoo species survival collection, okay? Fire system alarm testing fund, number twenty-six oh-nine. The revenue stream for that is to account for fifty percent of all fees paid in association with the municipal fire alarm system into this revolving fund. That's exactly the same as it was last year. And on the expenditure side, it reads pretty much the same, the only difference is it used to say fire alarm stipend. We clarified that language to say fire alarm superintendent stipend, which is part of the collective bargaining agreement. The fire alarm superintendent receives an annual payment of a dollar amount and that comes out of this revolving fund. So, I, we added the word superintendent so that people would understand that that's exactly what that was. The, and in each of these cases so far, the revenue is, the, the ending balance of the fund is just rolling forward into the existing fund, okay? Fire alarm ambulance is the next fund, twenty-six ten. The language for this fund is exactly the same as it was in past years with the percentage of forty percent of the income generated by the charges from municipal ambulance services being dedicated to this fund. The twenty-six ten is, the expenditures allowed are the purchase or lease of ambulance, municipal ambulances or for equipping and maintaining the ambulances, personnel expenses and/or stipends associated with operating and administering the city's emergency medical service and for the expenses related to third-party billing.
Is that salaries?
There, there are some salaries coming out of this fund, let's see, and those have changed depending on the year and I want to, I hate to use the word the health of the fund, but there are different times that salaries have come out of here. So, right now, that's my mistake, Mr. Conti. The, a full-time salary isn't coming out of here. What is coming out of here right now is overtime for the operation. The EMT differential stipend is coming out of here and salary stipends associated with this type of work. So, right now, year-to-date personnel costs that have come out of this revolving fund is six hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
That's a lot of dough.
Pardon me?
That's a lot of dough.
It is, a lot of money.
That's mainly in overtime, that can't be in stipends.
Four hundred and sixty-seven thousand of it is in overtime. Your EMT differential, year-to-date, is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And there'll be a second payment, which is, you know, the, the chief and I look at this fund and kind of say, okay, you know, he's very good at managing his fund, but we have to make sure that there's real money cash on hand in order to do this. So, the way that the ordinance is drafted and written, as you look at this fund, right, if something were to happen in the budget, those, those expenses would have to shift to the budget. So, the way the ordinance is drafted provides for latitude. None of these things say shall pay, it says may. So, these expenditures can come from these funds, they don't have to. So, in a situation where, you know, we needed to shift an expense to the general fund or come in and ask for an additional appropriation, those things are being addressed through the development of the ordinance, trying to say, hey, what do we have to worry about? So.
Mr. Chair? Got one question. The expenses related to third-party billing, is that a, an individual or?
No, it's a company.
Okay, so it's a, it's a flat rate basically?
Percentage of the revenue collected.
Got you.
Yep, and we have a contract with that. It was bid. So, it was, um, it's actually a pretty reasonable rate. In the past, though, there have been years in which that an individual's salary came out of this. That, you know, when this, when this particular year was developed, that's not the case.
What's the third party, they do outsource it, yeah?
Yeah, they outsource that, but, I mean, there, there was been a captain who's a portion of his salary used to come out of here, you know what I mean? It's, yeah. And if you had all those salaries coming out of here, you have all the fringe coming out of here, you know, so.
That's good, the way it is now.
And, you know, it is, it is something that the fire chief looks at and is concerned about, you know? He'll have to address differently, different things at some point. So, I recently made a note and sent an email to the administration and the fire chief. There, there was a very generous donation from a resident here in the city of Attleboro that was to main, purchase equipment for an ambulance. That donation, you know, which was low six figures, it was over a hundred thousand dollars, but that's been used for the last couple of years. So, that money that was being used out of that donation account for ambulance supplies, that's not going to be there in an upcoming year. I made mention of that to the administration and said, hey, I just want to make sure you realize there's only about nine thousand dollars left out of this fund, that's going to have to be addressed in future years. Do you know what I mean? So, we try to do that whenever we can, make sure that, you know, we don't get everything, but every time that we have the opportunity or notice that type of stuff, we'll bring it to the department's attention and the administration's attention if necessary. So, that was fire ambulance. Twenty-six eleven is the health immunization fund. That's to, that fund is to receive one hundred percent of the income generated by the administration of vaccines and testing, done here by the health department. And you'll notice when the purchase of, uh, excuse me, the purposes and expenditures during each fiscal year, the health agent with the approval of the mayor may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the health immunization fund, twenty-six eleven, for the purposes of necessary immunization for residents of the city of Attleboro or as determined to be necessary. to prevent the spec- uh, spread of diseases. That's the exact same language as it has been historically, but that's not limited to just Attleboro residents. As a matter of public health, if it needed to happen, and they needed to do vaccinations, and I live in North Attleboro, and they said, "Look, we're sticking you with that needle to vaccinate you," I would have no choice from the perspective of public health. So, I might have a choice, but.
So, Jackie Byrne provides flu vaccines for free. Where's all this money coming from?
Jackie, um, so, there's some stuff that is actually paid for. Other people do TB testing, that kinda stuff. So.
The city does.
TB testing? Mm-hmm. It's a, yeah, I believe it's, and there's a-
A blood scroll system?
Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who specifically that it's done for. I know there are other immunizations that are done under the public health system, and they may charge you a fee for that.
How many dollars are in this fund, Deb?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question. Sorry.
How many dollars are in this fund?
Right now, twenty-six eleven, has a balance of one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
Nothing.
An incoming balance last year of fifteen-seventy-eight-thirty. You know, revenue collected year-to-date is sixteen-forty-eighty-five, and expenditures year-to-date are one-thousand-three fifty-four-nineteen.
It's nothing. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a small revolving fund.
Deb, would you be able to get us the balances on these accounts?
I actually have this for you. I have current and chart form for everybody.
Awesome.
Um, I didn't hand them out. Uh, maybe I should. So, if you wanna ha- have them now, you're welcome to them, but, um, so this one, you're gonna see, top left-hand corner, it says, "The year and period." Period nine means March, okay?
Why don't we hand them out at the end, if you're all right with that?
Yeah. And, and I hate to say it, but I didn't want everybody just going to those and not listening to me.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And the other thing that I brought for everybody is, so that you'd have a sense of the volume for a year, I brought you, um, last year's entire activity. Okay, so, there's two charts. Last year's in totality, this year, year-to-date through period nine. There's still revenues coming in and being accounted for. So, if you, if I had to update this for you, for period nine, it might be slightly different. It's not gonna be a measurable amount, so it's not substantial enough not to give it to you. So, I'll definitely give those to you today before we leave.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep. So.
It was just a point of clarification to, um, through the chair and the council. Like, when you go to get your flu shot, you do fill out your medical forms. So, if you're, and they do bill, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they get a, and they get a refund from that. Like, there's no out-of-cock, out-of-pocket expense. If you have health insurance, then they'll get a payment on it. If you don't, then there is, there's no.
They should, anyway.
They should, yeah.
And right now, that revenue is going to the general fund. We're looking at that, okay? If, if it's appropriate, that's an out, that's an outstanding question, because that's not Medicaid money. That's private insurance money. It makes a difference. So, we're looking to find out if this is, if this is an appropriate avenue. But that, that, even that money into this fund, you'd only be looking at about four thousand dollars. It's not, you know, four to five.
It all depends on what Jackie's access is to the amount of immunizations and what she can do and, and things like that. So, that's, that's greatly from the, from what's available to the state.
Thank you.
No worries.
And I just wanted to tell you, Rick, um, they have, uh, to everyone, they have a bunch of cool immunizations. I know to volunteer with cats who are pre-rabies vaccinated, you have to have a human pre-exposure rabies vaccination, which are three shots done one month apart, and they're super painful. They're also super expensive. So, my husband was pricing it out. At sturdy, it was gonna be over six hundred dollars. The city would do it for three hundred dollars. So, they have kind of atypical immunizations that someone might need, and he paid for that, because it was less than sturdy. And I'm sure that that funding would go into this revolving.
Um, occasionally in the building, you'll see people who are going to travel, and they have to get specific vaccines that I believe happens through this office, and occasionally students that are coming here, and they have to address something through the public health system. This is where that revenue goes. So, it's a very beneficial fund for people that need it, you know. So, it was something, I think, under Jim Mooney that was established. Police false alarm, fund twenty-six sixteen, is, let's see.
They're skipping the recreation.
Oh, those poor recreation people. Dennis would not like that. Let me, you know what? I have a missing page here. Let's see. I need page six.
Six, yep.
Got it. Thanks. All right. Recreation Fund, twenty-six fourteen. Slight change in the revenue language. So, let me read that to you. "City auditor shall establish Recreation Fund, twenty-six fourteen, as a separate fund, and credit to the fund, income generated by Recreation Department Activities, rental of Recreation Department Facilities, and state revenue in support of the George I Spacher Pool." The change is the Spacher Pool revenue being dedicated to this fund. In fiscal two thousand and seventeen, um, the Recreation Director was able to have a memorandum of understanding drafted with the state, where the state contributed after billing, like, twenty-five thousand dollars toward the expenses for the, the pool. So, he, he, Dennis Walsh, the director, had to invoice basically the state, saying, you know, "This is what we, we incurred expenses greater than twenty-five thousand dollars, but that's what they were willing to pay us." That revenue went to the general fund. There were also expenses greater than twenty-five thousand dollars that were borne by the general fund out of the Recreation Department's budget associated with the pool. But in order to sort of keep the expense together with the actual expense and have more come from the revolving fund, it makes sense that if we're able to secure those agreements in the future, that those agreements would go here. That twenty-five thousand dollars was not, to my knowledge, recognized on the recap, because as a potential estimated local receipt, because at the time that was developed, I didn't know about it. So, the expenses will flow through on an accounting basis, okay to the general fund, but this is probably a more appropriate space for it. And it's, that has been added at the request of the director of the Recreation Department, and the administration said that that would be okay with them as well. So, if it's okay with you, that's where that will go. Purposes and expenditures, predominantly the language is the same, although we did add that capital upgrades for recreational facilities would be an allowable expense, sort of outlined, so everybody would understand that that is something that has, um, the possibility of coming out of here. And again, including wages for program staff. The wages for program staff here are not full-time employees, but we have a number of lifeguards that are paid out of here. You know, the students and people that come in for the summer and help run the recreation program. Some of those people are on the city's payroll, as opposed to a consultant that might be running a specific baseball program or football program and that kinda stuff. We do have some contracted employees, not employees, contract vendors that are paid out of here. But we also have people that are summer employment or seasonal temporary employees paid out of here. Most of the seasonal temporary employees don't qualify for fringe benefits, so you don't have to worry about that extraordinary expense coming from a revolving fund. Twenty-six, that's twenty-six fourteen. Twenty-six fifteen, this fund, for point of clarification, if you went backwards to prior revolving fund votes, the name of this fund would've said Animal Shelter, parentheses, expenditure limit, six thousand dollars, okay? This fund has been renamed under the ordinance as Animal Welfare Fund. That becomes important later on, because we have another new fund that is associated with the animal shelter. This fund, the language is exactly the same as it has been in previous years, which is, "The separate fund and credit to the fund, one-third of the income generated by the adoption fee derived under City Ordinance is nine-dash-two, as amended, for both dogs and felines, and to receive one dollar of every fee collected pursuant to section nine-dash-four-three of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro." So, that's the same as it was last year, presented to you. And under the purposes and expenditures, "The Animal Control Officer with the approval of the Superintendent of Parks and Forestry and the Mayor may incur liabilities against and spend monies from the Animal Welfare Fund, number twenty-six fifteen, for the purposes, excuse me, for the purpose of direct services for the care of animals, such as medical treatment, spay and neutering of animals, and food for animals. Prohibited expenditures are building maintenance, facility care expenses, and salary and wages." So, those are not allowed out of this fund, and that's something that, again, my office would.
Deb, can you just remind me what nine-dash-forty-three is? That's the dollar is pulled from it?
I think originally that dollar was the one that went to the city clerk, the license fee.
I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. Um, back in the early nineteen hundreds, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts set up a system where it was the clerk in each city and town that was responsible for wild dogs that were killing sheep and, and injuring livestock. No, this is true. And, and the clerks were kinda not happy that the state made the clerks responsible for the management of the wild animals. So, the state enacted an ordinance that would allow cities and towns to divert a dollar to the clerk, basically as a cash payment for every license, so that they could take a buck and put it in their pocket, and not complain about having to take care of the wild dogs and feral cats. So, that went on until two thousand and eight, or six, when I put forth a measure in front of the council saying, "Why are we putting a dollar on every license into the clerk's pocket? It should go into the Animal Welfare Fund," which was at that time, the Animal Shelter Fund. And the council passed it.
So, it's dog licenses?
Yes.
And then, and a, and the other related animal one, which we haven't come across yet, but we will, will be late fees on dogs.
Yes.
All set.
All right. Thank you for answering that. Um, so, that's the Animal Welfare Fund. Same fund as historically, then the, the limitations on that fund, okay? Fund twenty-six sixteen is the Police False Alarm Fund. Um, the revenue stream for this fund would be one hundred percent of the income generated by false alarm fees and fines. The one change that I did make to that fund is, the language used to say, um, "One hundred percent of the income generated by false alarm fees and fines for the city of Attleboro, collected by the police department." The revenue was actually collected in the clerk's office. The, the violation is issued through the police department, but the revenue actually is collected in the clerk's office, so that, for clarity, for people to say, "Who collects this money?" It wouldn't erroneously, you know, drive them to think that the police department's responsible for the collection. So, that's the only change to this fund. The expenses are exactly what they were historically, which is to provide for, um, any needed training and equipment, and provide for personnel expenses, including overtime, associated with the operating and administering of the false alarm ordinance. So, that's consistent with what you have had previously. The next fund is the new fund. This new fund is the Animal Shelter Building Fund, which is why the language of the Animal Welfare Fund has changed, since it's not building-related. I, I'm gonna change the name of that. The Animal Shelter Building Fund is, the revenue is going to be derived from the late fees collected under City Ordinance nine-dash-three-seven-point-one and nine-dash-four-three. Those two ordinances, right now, have, they say, um, right now, all late fees, um, nine-dash-three-seven includes a sentence that says, "All late fees collected under this provision shall be reserved for the Animal Shelter Building Fund, subject to future appropriations." And nine-dash-four-three states, uh, there's a sentence that says, "All late fees collected under this provision shall be reserved for the Animal Shelter Building Fund, subject to further appropriation." So, what has happened with that money thus far is that has gone into Fund twenty-five-oh-eight, the Animal Shelter Fund, number twenty-five-oh-eight. This, that money went into that fund, and that was used as part of the construction of the facility, the brand-new facility, when you, this honorable body appropriated it and said that was okay. Okay? So, this revenue stream, the construction is done. This revenue stream would now be a dedicated revenue stream for the purposes of, to spend the money from the Animal Shelter Fund for the upkeep and maintenance of the Animal Shelter Building. This body would have to annually say how much money could be used in that regard, because you're gonna have to vote the cap, but these expenditures would be limited to the upkeep and maintenance of the Animal Shelter Building. Now, I, I would say, I, I would not say that would include ordinary operational expenses. I would say that would not include electricity. I would say that would not include a water bill. I would say, though, that's not what I would say upkeep and maintenance of the Animal Shelter Building are. So, to me, this is if they needed to make a repair, if they needed to clean the floors, if they needed to paint the, you know. I think the only question I'd have is, and I, I drafted this, so, I mean, you know, the question to me would be, the immediate grounds surrounding there, you know, do you have a sprinkler system down there? You know, if they needed to rehydrate seed, you know what I mean? That type of stuff. I'd say that's an allowable expense, but, you know, no animal expenditures. So, this, this fund is not intended to buy the dog food, to buy, you know, needed supplies for the actual animals. This is for the building. So, I'd say cleaning supplies would be in, you know, 'cause they need to buy potentially cleaning supplies. That would be my understanding of this. So, this is a new fund, so I'm interested to know what, what your perspective is on that, because I think that's my job, to make sure that I do what you guys want. Yes?
Uh, Council Conti, on which question?
Yes. Um, it was intended to be repair and replace only. The capital improvement would be to repair, replace, enhance, prevent future cons- prevent future facility issues, you know, like a leak in the roof. That would be the capital improvement. But I, the reason why I rose my hand, Mr. Chairman, is because I wanna say publicly to my wife, Martha, who's watching at home, to put the champagne in the refrigerator, 'cause when I go home, I'm celebrating. I'm so happy to see this actually make the light of day. Deb, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, thanks. That's nice. It wasn't on me, but.
I know, I know. We've been working on this for two years.
Yeah, it's been out there for a long time. And this is important, the, you know what I mean? This is a nice revenue stream that you can dedicate, so that a brand-new facility in the city will be well-maintained and, you know, kept up, and, you know, there, there'll be money for that. You know, it's not a huge amount of money, because hopefully people pay their stuff on time, but those that don't, it's gonna be going back to.
Well, we're hoping that the building doesn't need anything for a long time. There will be a lot of money there.
Right.
Um, Mr. Conti introduced business, um, last year, um, to essentially establish a, a fund like this, and there was some ambiguity as to where the.
Right.
Funds would go, so I purposely wanted to hold off until we could get those questions answered.
Thank you.
You know, this was wonderfully serendipitous. Um, so my question, Deb, is, um, am I right to assume that the funds from twenty-five-oh-eight?
Yes.
Will roll over, and that'll be the new starting?
Which is why that language is in every single one. But if you'll notice in this one, it's not a mistake, that the, the revenue from twenty-five-oh-eight, the, the ending balance in Fund twenty-five-oh-eight, will go into this fund at the beginning of fiscal eighteen, when the books are closed and everything's balanced out. That money will go over here. Just so people are aware, the total expenses that have happened out of Fund twenty-five-oh-eight since inception to date is just over eighteen thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. And I didn't do the math on this, but annually, you collect between, um, in fiscal seventeen, so far, forty-seven hundred dollars is in late fees. You know, um, fiscal sixteen, it was seven thousand, one-seventy-five. Fiscal fifteen, it was sixty-five hundred, fourteen, sixty-five, twenty-five. So, you know, people do pay this late, and this revenue will stay in this fund, if this is voted by the council, and it would continue to accrue there and only be used for this limited scope.
Excellent. Vice President, Debbie Day, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just, I'm thrilled about this, too, and thank you for all your work on this, Deb. But I think Chairman Delisio also deserves some credit on this. Um, it was brought to actually be stricken completely in March of twenty-sixteen, because there was buildings. There's no more need for the fund. And after discussion, um, the chairman chose to hold it, and he didn't have to. He could've voted to strike it out. But I think, seeing what you came up with, just putting it off for a year, the city's gonna greatly benefit from it. So, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on that. And I'd just like to kind of parrot what Mr. Conti said. Um, I, I was one of the more vocal members for kind of keeping this account. And I see it personally as a, as a capital improvements account. So, you have a leak in the roof, maybe not so much painting a wall, but maybe more, you know, capital improvements. The air conditioner goes out, the cleaning system goes out. They have a high-powered pressure cleaning system. Things like that would definitely be things that I would think would be covered under this, because the whole goal, which we all stated when we built the animal shelter, is, well, we don't wanna be pouring more money into this. So, my hope of this is in ten, twenty years, maybe it will have accrued enough money, and maybe we will have an expenditure limit of an amount that we could patch up half a roof if we needed to, or something like that, rather than using general fund money. So, that's my thought. But I'm, I'm thrilled and over the moon, and thank you, and thanks to the administration, because I know that they were a part of this as well, and, and thank you to Chairman Delisio.
Right on point.
And to that comment about the capital improvements, and I think Mr. Conti, um, said this, too. We do have to be, because it, it obviously, it may accrue, but it ob- but it obviously doesn't generate a lot of money because of the late fees, and we have to just make sure that we don't cross over and try to take monies out of this fund that would have been handled through the Capital Improvement Fund. And that would be my only caution on this, in terms of, you know, the future, is that we just be careful that we are very critical about what gets paid out of this fund and what really should get paid out of another fund, if that makes sense what I'm saying.
No. Explain it, explain it better.
Well, capital improvements. For instance, if it's really a capital improvement issue, that should be paid out of the Capital Improvements Fund, not then just say, "Okay, well, there's money in this fund, so just take it out of there." That's, I guess the.
I, I understand what you're saying. I think, um, I, I don't know we necessarily have a Capital Improvement Fund, but I think we have an opportunity where we can spell out the language a little better, in terms of the purposes and expenditures, and I think that's something that.
Well, we do have a Capital Improvement Program.
We have a program, not a fund.
Right, so, fund was the wrong word to use, but yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but no, I think your mindset's absolutely on point, and I think that, again, we have the opportunity to spell this out a little bit more, be a little more prescriptive, what we want to see in this, um, in this section, especially with purposes and expenditures.
And this one in particular is pretty important, because you'll notice it doesn't say capital upgrades. So, and we've specifically added that language to the zoo revolving. We've specifically added that language to the recreation facilities. That's not here. You know, so that's something to consider. And to your point, very early in the discussion, Councilor Conti, how do we, how do you go forward and do an amendment? I think on the expenditure side, because it's may and not must, it's much easier than on the revenue side, because the revenue side, we have to find out, you know, what it is. But I know from conversations with the city solicitor already, that capital would have been allowed, because we inserted the language into two other, two others, specifically inserted that language into two other programs. The other thing to consider, when the cap comes downstairs, right? Right now, it's going to be a small cap, because it's not a lot of money that we potentially have. But to your point, if there's, if the money is going to accrue in this and stay there over time, then you would have an opportunity in the future to increase the cap. So, the la, uh, do, yeah, sorry.
Just clarify for, for me, if, if we did want to add capital expenditures, we would just add it under twenty dash thirteen point three?
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
I'm going to follow up the city solicitor just to ensure, I just actually.
Because it, it might just be easier if we're in agreement that that's a friendly amendment or something that you could just bring in.
I want to find out, make sure that we can. So I think I'll take that, follow it up with the city solicitor. Because I, I don't want to, I don't want to be in a situation where we go through all this, get it done.
Exactly. And I appreciate your diligence in that. My, my other thought is just to, to Mr. Conti, maybe through the chair, whoever. It, it looks like it would, I mean, in my vision, because it accrues little amounts of money, but it'll add up. We don't need an expenditure limit that's very high right now, because if the roof is, is in bad shape, we should know that a year ahead of time.
Should be under warranty.
When that year comes up, we should be able to increase the expenditure limit for that year to cover whatever capital improvement is needed, and then either leave it there or lower it back again.
The other thing to consider, I'm sorry.
I think that, that you, what, what, what we need to be clear about is that I'm going to be sending you an email that's going to say, "Change twenty dash thirteen point three, delete upkeep and maintenance, and insert capital improvement expenditures", because the first thing that's going to go in that animal shelter in about fifteen years is the generator. That's going to be a two-hundred-thousand-dollar expense in, in fifteen years. And in fifteen years, I have no faith that the city of Attleboro will have a capital fund. So, if we have, say, um, forty-five thousand, fifty thousand in the fund, they can apply the fifty thousand to the new generator, but they're going to have to come to, to free cash and estimate to allocate two-hundred-ten-thousand dollars to pay for the generator. It'll, it'll wipe out this fund, but it won't create a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar drain on the free cash. That's the whole idea. That's simple. It's just that simple.
There's a lot of it.
Theoretically, we're.
No, I'm just saying like, that, exactly. Because I, I don't think anyone ever saw this to help with upkeep and maintenance.
Okay, and, and that's, that's fair, okay.
I think it's a capital fund.
Two ways, the way you just described it, I think you could do that, right? Like, well, obviously it has to go through the city solicitor, but in my head, I'm thinking, okay, that would work. The other thing that would work is what we sort of talked about at the beginning, that you allow no expenditures from the fund. So your cap that you vote is zero. The revenue continues to go in there.
And future councils would vote to release it. That's not so bad.
And, and the wisdom in that is, it's a brand-new building.
Yeah, exactly right.
It should be under warranty. The generator should be on, under warranty, so.
As we learned in building schools, that doesn't always work.
Yeah, right. Well, but I think it allows us some flexibility and some leeway to be able to.
Yeah, I like her suggestion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
If you like it that much, you should invite her for champagne.
Doors open.
But that, that solves that problem. You know what I mean? So, in, in instances where the funds aren't as healthy and they can't support the proposed expense, the same thing could happen. You know, there could be years where the cap would be reduced from the administration, or, and that, the, if it's the cap that you, because you get to vote that every year, that's still under the control of the council. So you could say, "How much is in that fund?", and you say, "We're not going to let you spend any of that this year." You spent fifteen thousand dollars on a roof repair last year, because it built up, and the cap this year is zero. And if all of a sudden the cap was zero, there's a substantial amount of money in that fund, and there becomes a, a need for it. The administration and the department has the opportunity to come back to the honorable body and ask for an increase in a cap, or in a cap to be established. That's provided for in the ordinance and the section. That might even be, they, I mean, obviously change that language, but that might be the easiest thing for you to do immediately. It becomes similar to what you had before, which is subject to further appropriation, but if you voted an annual cap, it's not. Because revolving funds aren't going to be subject to further appropriation on an ongoing basis. It just wouldn't work through, like, it just wouldn't fiscally work in order to facilitate the actual business of the city. But on this one, I can see that, that would probably solve what you're asking and be much more in line with what I think your goal is. Should I continue or? Yeah, okay, so the fingerprinting fund, which is the one that we talked about a little bit earlier, that's the brand-new fund. You'll notice, um, that it's the fifty-dollar, it doesn't specifically say the fifty dollars, because it's under another ordinance, and we all know some ordinances can change. But the separate fund to credit the fees collected under City Ordinance into this fund, and then the expenditures, um, would be for the fingerprint fund cost associated with the administration of the fingerprint system. And as required by Mass General Law, Chapter Six, Section one seventy-two B and a half, a portion of the fee is to be forwarded to the fingerprint identification verification trust. You'll notice in this particular account, the balance in the agency account, eighty-nine, ten, dash, two-four-five, zero-zero-five, that money, when the books are closed, that's the money that will roll into this fund, and the appropriate action will be taken relative to those funds. Again, that's a small amount of money that's in that account right now. I believe it's just over fifteen hundred dollars. One thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, which has been accruing since inception. That's all I have, relative to the revolving fund.
That's it, huh?
Yes. It's been a long, it's been a little while. But we'll pass these out to all of you.
Thanks, Deb.
So I hope I answered the questions. I'm here if you have any more. I certainly will forward to you the information relative to salaries-related items. Thank you so much. The salaries that come out of there, and if it stipends and that kind of stuff, I'll, I'll annotate that. I'll try to do that in like grid form or something, so that it's easy reference material for you.
Deb, thank you, thank you for meeting with me, uh, two weeks ago. I mean, this is, it's a lot. There's a lot that goes into this.
It's a pretty big change.
Yeah.
It's taken a while, but, um, some of the guidance was provided by DOR, which didn't come out until, I want to say, January. So, this is something that we had hoped to do earlier, but Bob Manierati and I had talked about it a number of times and stuff, and we were waiting for the, um, guidance from DOR. And then that came out subsequent, and we.
But also, thank you for coming down, spending the time with us tonight. But also, you know, really for facilitating this, not just, um, with us, but I mean, you look at with the city solicitor, the chief of police, the director of budget and admin, the building commissioner, the health agent, solid waste coordinator, director of council of aging, the rec director, super, acting superintendent, box and forestry, the zoo director, fire chief, the health nurse, animal control officer. I mean, the administration, it's, it's a giant collaborative effort, which I don't think can be overlooked at all. So, thank you to everyone who's involved.
They, they really were very helpful. Everybody, you know, was really good about participating and, you know, adding what they thought they needed to. All right, thank you. I'm just going to, um, let you all have these. There are two different ones, so let's, I want to first take one and pass along. Oh, which one is this?
Yeah, and then, then it'll be, uh, voted by the full council.
And.
It'll just be three committee members.
And if you have any follow-up questions for me, um, everybody knows how to get me. I think most of you, email or stop by, you know. It's not like we're strangers, but I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions that you have. And, um, thank you for your time. I know it was a long session.
Thank you for your time.
Hanging out so late after work.
That's okay.
Well, at this point, you'd have to, whether you do it in time or in a subsequent meeting, you, you need to vote it out of, you need to call for a public hearing. Basically, we're.
Okay, thank you.
I just have.
Thank you.
So I just have one piece of business, um, as it relates to this. I would move to call for a public hearing on Tuesday, May second.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And that's it. I would also entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Thank you, and we are adjourned at eight thirty.
Get a vote, give a vote on it.
Oh, yeah, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at eight thirty-seven. Thank you, everyone, I know that was lengthy, but I appreciate it. Good discussion, good questions.
Um, I have Deb's here, and I have something, why she scheduled mine, if I just grab her.
Yeah, and I have something on mine too, that's related to it, but I need Frank. I can't be without Frank.
Thank you, that's why I was.
Yeah, you are. And, and when she's done with you, I need you for capital improvements. On renaming the funds.
Okay. No, I appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
You get overtime, right?
Um, I think the matter before you is, would I, oh, sorry.
The, I'd like to call Budget and Appropriations to order at eight thirty-eight P M. Thank you, and the motion before us is, I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to, uh, that, uh, the mayor's request that the Attleboro Municipal Council authorize permission to charge prior-year health insurance PDP premiums to the current fiscal year. Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, and thank you so much for staying and answering any more questions, in case, if you want to explain it, and then if anyone had any questions, because I know it goes back a couple of years, so.
Yeah, so, I'm going to try to be as succinct as possible with this, because this one's pretty complicated. The PDP is Prescription Drug Program. As part of the Prescription Drug Program, individuals who are Medicare eligible and are eligible for what's called an LIS, Low Income Subsidy, the city would pay a reduced premium to the provider, which in this case is Blue Cross Blue Shield. There is the subsidy portion, which is covered by the federal government, it's my understanding, isn't paid for by the city or by the member. If the subsidy was fifteen dollars of the premium, and you're a surviving spouse, in error, the city attributed a fifty percent share of the fifteen-dollar subsidy to the budget, instead of refunding that seven dollars and fifty cents to the individual who qualified for the low su, the subsidy. So, there was a recent change in the personnel office, and so I pulled some information to review it, and I questioned the application of the subsidy as it was distributed through the budget. When the bill was paid, it's either applied to, you, you either pay the bill, it's a portion between the employee's share of the bill and the city's share of the bill. The share of the bill that's the city may be the ci, uh, the water department, wastewater department, city or school. So, the LIS, which is the Low Income Subsidy, share that needs to go back to the individual that was entitled to the subsidy, needs to be refunded, which means, if that needs to be refunded, it's, the agency account would be made whole, but the portion of the bill that should have been paid for out of the personnel budget, or the school department budget, the water department budget, or the wastewater department budget, was short. So, in order to correct this, ordinarily, we would request bills for previous years. We'd ask for permission to pay a bill for previous year. It's the same thing, we're going to adjust for the bills for previous year, but I don't want this to happen out of the account five-seven, which is an ordinary bills-for-previously-year account. We just need permission to do it. Some of this activity will be moving in and out of agency accounts, which have nothing to do with appropriation. Some of this will happen out of the Personnel Office budget, and yes, it will come out of their current year budget, if you give me permission to do it this way, and the school budget. It's a much smaller share out of the school budget. So far, with what we've reviewed for fiscal two thousand and seventeen, none of the individuals that qualified for the subsidy are retirees of the water or wastewater department. I can't say for sure that that won't happen as we review it, because this is probably a three and a half, a, a three and a half-year review that we'll have to do. The individual amount to, um, an individual that may be refunded, you know, if the subsidy was seventeen dollars and fifty-nine cents, it's not necessarily a substantial amount of money, but it is that individual's money, and that money should be refunded. So, the Personnel Office has been going through them, and my office has been going through, checking them, and we're preparing to do the entire refund. Fiscal two thousand and seventeen has been completely corrected, and on a go-forward basis, it will obviously be done correctly, the application of the LIS. The distribution of the subsidy is being done correctly now, but these individuals are entitled to their refund, and the only way I can get it done is staff permission to charge the budget for it.
Okay, and that's why you answered kind of one of my questions I had, is, because we don't have an amount.
Yeah, there is, it's not, I don't know the amount. And my estimate, based on fiscal seventeen activity, is maybe overall fifteen thousand dollars. I'd say two-thirds to the city, one-third to the school. I've had a conversation with the dir, uh, with the controller of the school, Mark Bato. He knows this is happening. What happened is, basically, that their budget wasn't charging enough money for their expense. Their budget, our budget, if water and wastewater is involved, we took a credit that we shouldn't have taken. That credit belonged to the individual. The reason that it happens too is, you don't know until after the fact who qualifies for the subsidy. So if you're an individual that's contributing for your, or, it's all retirees, because it's Medicare-related, right? If you're a person contributing for your health insurance, and your bill for your health insurance is thirty dollars a month, if you, you pay as a direct pay, if it comes out of your retirement benefit, whatever it is, that thirty dollars, it's more than thirty dollars, everybody, just, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. That money comes in, we take that from you. And then, the retroactive bill for the PDP comes in, which is for a different period. We, you've already paid your contribution, and you'll show up on that bill as a person entitled to a credit. The other reason, ordinarily, in bills for previous years, you'd get a list of dollar amount and people. Under HIPAA, I can't give you the list of people anyway. You know, so, I can't tell you who has or doesn't have health insurance. I can tell you how many plans the city has. If I looked it up, I could tell you. But I can't say that, you know, Sam Smith has it, and, you know what I mean? That's not public information, so. This would resolve the ability for us to.
Resolution to something that you picked up on yourself, you said, that you recognized from.
It just didn't make sense to me, why would we get the subsidy? So we followed up on it in Personnel, and, you know, we did the research, and we found out from Blue Cross, no, and, I mean, it makes sense to me. It's, it's, it's not an easy task to identify all these people and get them the money, but they're entitled to the money. And, you know, if it's seven dollars or seventeen dollars, it's not our money. It's those people that were qualified for the low-income subsidy. So, we're working on, we've done all of fiscal two thousand and seventeen, but we have to go back to the inception of the PDP, which was January first, two thousand and fourteen. And I believe, with the help of the Personnel Office, we'll get this done by the end of the fiscal year. The overall dollar amount for our three and a half years at fifteen thousand dollars, it's not huge, but it would be issued to the individual. So, the people, if they qualified for a low, and we don't say who qualifies for that or not. That's a federal program. It, we have no idea the guidelines. You might qualify one month, and if your income levels change, the, you might drop off that bill. So that's not something we know on an individual basis until every single invoice is reviewed and that's being done.
And the procedure that you, um, spoke about, that you're going to be transferring money, trying to rectify the situation, it's under the principles, the guide rules, from you as the auditor, correct?
Yeah, so, all I need, honestly, is permission to charge the budget for something that was a previous-year expense.
That's what I just wanted to clarify, that this, as our city auditor, that you're going by the parameters, the guidelines, financial guidelines, everything is apparent to. Because I'm just, I'm just, um, affecting the budget going forward too, though.[1785.74] Because if we're making certain adjustments, you're saying now we're going to pay those bills in this fiscal year, so now those budgets will be impacted also.
They will. The amount of money that flows in and out of the health insurance accounts on an annual basis, even if I did all fifteen thousand dollars to one account, it wouldn't be enough to skew an analysis going forward. The benefit of making, instead of going into the 57 account, the bill-for-previous-year account, and having it go into the exact health insurance accounts, is we can see the activity and we can tie it out if, in fact, we have to do some other reconciliation in the future. The agency accounts are also affected, but that's easy, because it's in and out. So what happened, basically, is a bill for two hundred dollars was paid, and it was apportioned incorrectly through four different accounts. Three out of the four accounts, I need permission from you to charge for a bill for previous year. One of the accounts, it's an agency account. That's just in and out. There's no budget associated with that. That's an accounting mechanism. That's where the individual's money came into, and I let it sit there, and we paid the bill. But instead of paying the bill and giving them fifteen dollars, we paid the bill and only gave them seven fifty. So the budget was charged less than it should have been. The biggest hit will be to this Personnel Office budget. The, and it makes sense, because typically, your retirees in the School Department had a higher wage. So the people that qualified for the low-income subsidy, and some of these individuals could be surviving spouses of people who, you know, have been retired for many, many, many years.
So they're going to have the largest impact of the Personnel Department. Okay, and I will open up the floor to any questions, since Deb is here. I just wanted to make sure, any clarification, because there was a lot of background to go over, and I didn't want to speak out of turn and have any misinformation.
Yeah, the whole PDP and LIS subsidy and stuff like that, it gets confusing, and, and it wasn't obvious, because the agency account, the amount of money coming in and out of the agency account was right. Everything netted to zero. It's not until you actually looked at the specific detail that you could say. This doesn't intuitively make sense.
Okay, and then just to ask a question, just to ask. If we didn't do it the procedurally way that you're going to do it financially, transferring, if we didn't just take it out and pay, say, from one account, from a larger account, like a, I don't like the rainy day account, as people call it, why don't we just take that one, that large amount, say fifteen thousand dollars, and then pay it back, and not...
Theoretically, the administration could have asked for an appropriation going into a health insurance account in order to hit that account. I just don't think that it's really the appropriate thing to do. I didn't even suggest it, because at some point in time, all of these budgets had the benefit of money that wasn't theirs.
Okay, and I just wanted to ask, if someone would say, why don't you take it from your revert, reserve fund, or any other questions, I just wanted to put that question out there.
And honestly, for the amount of money that goes in and out of health insurance accounts, I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. On a fifteen thousand dollars is not, I hate to say it, that, it's a lot of money to me personally, but to the health insurance accounts, it's not a substantial amount of money.
Okay, and I just, as I said, I always want to make sure all the questions are answered going forward, because that could come up. Why don't we just take that one amount from the reserve fund?
And typically, we don't for previous-year bills. If you'll notice, most of the time, if the department, like, so particularly with the school, school previous-years bills, all we do is get permission to pay them. For the school, it's always in that fashion. On our side of government, sometimes it's maybe sixty, forty split that, you know, a request is. Oftentimes, it's out of the individual department that they have to ask for the money. So I figured we would just charge the Personnel Office for that, yeah.
Thank you so much.
They didn't volunteer it.
I call for an adjournment at eight fifty.
Excuse me, you have a motion.
I take a vote on the motion. You are us. All in favor? I think you motion passes. I call for an adjournment at eight fifty PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
You know, earlier when we said we'd prefer you lost, you won the lottery, we take that back, too. Because we just need to keep you here forever, and ever, and ever.
So you're going to get by a boss?
No, I don't want either one to happen. But at the same token, like, really, like, her ability to be able to speak about any particular topic in such in-depth, using really big words, off the cuff, I mean, come on now. Really big words.
So Deb, don't leave, don't leave.
Yep, Deb, okay.
I'd like to call the Committee on Capital Improvement and City Development to order at eight fifty. Sitting on this committee is typically Councilor Cooper and Councilor Reynolds, in their absence. We will be assisted by Councilor Cooper and Councilor Denley, the President and Vice President for the Council.
Actually, a point of order, it's actually just you and I, because if I'm here, I become the second member. The Vice President normally fulfills the job of the President, if the President's not here.
Okay, very well. Thank you for the clarification. So it's me and you.
Yep.
So I have two motions from the Doc of April 18th. First motion is from the Doc of April 18th. Let me read the motion, and then you can comment. I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to transfer funds to the renamed Fund 3420-APS-FY17 Capital Projects. Forty thousand dollars from Account 3412-599000, Brendan Lam's other roof repair, other financing uses, to 3420-499000, APS fiscal year 17, capital projects, other financing sources. One hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Account 3421-599000, Brendan Lam's other boiler, other financing uses, to Account 3420-499000, APS fiscal year 17, capital projects, other financing sources. One hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Account 3423-599000, Willett Boiler, other financing uses, to Account 3420-499000, that's APS fiscal year 17, capital projects, other financing sources. Thirty thousand dollars from Account 3424-599000, Studley Facade at Entranceway, other financing uses, to Account 3420-499000, APS fiscal year 17, capital projects, other financing sources. Sixty thousand dollars from Account 3425599000, Willett Media Center AC Unit, other financing uses, to Account 3420599000, APS fiscal year 17, capital projects, other financing uses. And finally, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Account 3426-599000, Hill Roberts AC Units, other financing uses, to Account 3420-499000, APS fiscal year capital projects, other financing uses.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cooper.
You're welcome.
So, as you have just heard, we are transferring one, two, three, four, five, six accounts into one giant account. And Deb, you wrote a memorandum on March 27th to the mayor to explain why you're doing this. And since you're here, we're going to give you the floor.
Okay. So, um, November 15th, maybe, was the vote to fund all the projects?
Yes.
Out of the capital projects?
Yes, November 15th to November 16th.
Lucky, that's on my pot. So when that vote happened, typically, what happens is people approach me, people, the administration approaches me and says, these are the projects that we're doing. Can you assign account numbers? Can you have account numbers? The assignment of account numbers under the chart of accounts by statute is the responsibility of the city auditor. So based on the information provided at the time, and the best estimates that they had available with the school for the funding request for individual projects, we assigned individual capital projects for most of those things. What's happened, when the initial round of bids came in, which have to be redone because of a change to the bidding requirements under the Municipal Modernization Act, and that's being worked out now, and they're moving along through that process, some of the projects were coming in over what was in the individual funding, and some of them were coming in under. So in the aggregate, they seemed like they probably would make it, or it'd be slightly short. But, for example, one of the AC units, I want to say there was a sixty thousand dollar appropriation for one item, and the estimate, or there was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the first bid, which did have to be thrown out, was in the sixty thousand dollar range. So that sixty thousand dollar plus could be used toward the boiler repair that was coming in over, but it can't in my world. In my world, if you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a boiler, that's all you get to spend it on. So by revisiting the projects for the Attleboro Public School System, and sort of saying, as one big capital project, if we put it into one account, and as each project was awarded, I would move it into a sub-account, so that I can still capitalize a boiler. I can still capitalize the major roof repair and stuff like that on my asset side. To me, it makes more sense, and we're not calling for emergency measures all the time to try to move money around. The other thing I didn't really care for is, okay, if you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and your first estimate comes in at sixty, I don't want to move the other sixty out, because if you have a change order in the middle of a project, and we took that money out to try to cover another project, what are we going to do? You'd be back in the same boat, and you, you're not supposed to, you know, incur liabilities unless you have the funds and purchase orders. So that would slow the progress of the projects down.
Let me interrupt you and ask the question that was asked of me. How does the taxpayer know that the controls are in place? Whereas in the old way, if it was all individual accounts, they would have to come to the council for a change, to pay a change order for additional revenues, and it would be open and notorious and in the public domain. In this way, everything is all lumped together, and it's all just handled as a financial transaction.
Well, so in the example of the hundred and twenty thousand dollar appropriation and the original project comes in at sixty, I could sign a change order for ten thou, uh, not ten thousand, seven hundred dollars tomorrow, and you would never know. So that, you know, change orders and stuff like that, I signed on a regular basis in my office for construction projects all the time. So that happens as an ordinary course of business. If they got to the point where the project is awarded, and it gets to the point where I'm like, look, you're, there's ten things that are supposed to be achieved with this funding, and you're on number seven, and there's three to go, and you're running out of money, I obviously would bring it to somebody's attention, including the council, so that you'd have, you'd be aware of what's going on. I don't know what the bids are going to come out at. So if you wanted to keep it in the old model, we can. It's just, it would slow down the process for the school if they needed the flexibility in order to continue with the project. And if you're in the middle of a major construction project, and you run out of money, and there's no money, they technically have to stop that project. Would they stop it? I don't know. If a contractor does business at his own peril, if he doesn't ha, he or she, a contractor doesn't have the signature of the city auditor certifying the availability of funds, their first threshold of a lawsuit hasn't been met. So some vendors aren't going to do that. When I sign and certify that the funds are available for a construction contract, that means that at the end, I mean, obviously, they have to perform, and all of the other things have to be done correctly. But the first threshold of a lawsuit to the city of Attleboro for money that they're due is that. If they don't have the signature of the city auditor certifying the availability of funds, it becomes a problem. The roofs were looking like they were going to be the problem, I believe it was. Not the forty thousand dollar roofs. I'm, you'll have to figure me, I don't have a copy of that in front of me in my notes, but, see, it jinxed me. They, it was, they were coming in at one fifty-five, or the amount was one twenty, and they weren't going to have enough money. So this seemed like a reasonable solution. I don't mind it so much in this fashion, when it's for reserve out of free cash, because it's real money, and it's there. I really didn't like it when it was the two major capital projects, the water and wastewater, the one that came down as seven thousand, and the one that came down as five.
Yeah, they were bonded.
Yeah, those are the bond ones. Those are going to be more problematic.
Those are bigger numbers. This is only, well, a whole million dollars. And you wouldn't do this in a project if you had six projects that were costing ten million dollars apiece. You would not do this. You would not put them all together.
I would not advocate when it's borrowed funds, because it, same thing could happen with your borrowed funds. Do you know what I mean? Like, so this is retain, this is free cash money that was set aside for a capital project. I sort of looked at this, I mean, because I've had the great debate with particularly the Director of Budget and Administration, because every opportunity I get on the authorization for the seven million and the five million, the complexities of how those things have been sort of developed over time, I'm like, this is my worst nightmare. It's very complicated. You've had to set up some grids to account for it. And here I am, the one suggesting to do something very similar for the schools, for this stuff. But they, their window of opportunity for these repairs is also pretty tight, you know? You have students that are going to be out of the school. You go on summer break. I mean, if I need to, I mean, we can. If you keep them in separate funds, we certainly can. But addressing that might involve emergency measures, you know, get the council in on an emergency meeting and that kind of stuff, you know? I would hate to stop the flow of progress on a school project in order to get, once kids get out of school, get a boiler done, or get a roof done, or whatever it is that they need to get done, in the very small window of opportunity that they have.
Particularly, we've been waiting for somebody for twelve years.
Yeah.
Yes. Does anyone have questions for the other? Thank you. Yes?
I just want to say, Deb, I think you're coming at this from a pragmatic point of view, and I probably agree with that. But I think what some people might have is an overarching, like, division of powers concern. So are we ceding legislative power to the administration for the sake of expediency? And the answer might be yes, and the answer might be that's necessary. But there's these, like, form of government concerns I think some of us have. And you don't need to respond to that. I, I will probably vote to support this, but I just think that needs to be on the record.
That was such a more eloquent manner of expressing what I just asked.
I just think it should be on the record, that, that is a concern of some of us.
Yes, that's exactly what he said, is what I was trying to say.
Okay, and I think it's a, I think it's a fair question, you know? I mean, unfortunately, or fortunately, with this particular project, and what they're, what is trying to be achieved with it, I got the spreadsheet from the school, and, you know, I'm looking at the overall numbers in the aggregate, and I'm like, okay, in the aggregate, you're, you're to the good right now. But overall, you know, are you going to get, they have a couple of projects that you haven't bid yet. We have to revisit some of the bids, because unfortunately, we now have to advertise under COMBIES, which is a new requirement under the Modernization Act. So those things have to be addressed. And, you know, once we know we don't do something correctly, we fix it, you know what I mean? Like, we just don't plod along, you know, so. And looking at it, if the bids come in close to what they were before, you're over in some and under in others. So I'm personally not comfortable saying, okay, you're under by sixty thousand, you have a hundred and twenty, you have a sixty-nine thousand dollar bid, so you really have fifty thou, fifty-one thousand dollars available. If you, I don't want to take that fifty-one and shift it to somebody else, because, some other project within the same scheme, because you're going to potentially be short. I don't know if they'll make it for all of their projects with the money, the overall appropriation. They have a couple of pieces that they didn't even have anybody come forward to bid. You know, there was no interest out there in the market, so they, that has to be addressed. The only thing I can do to make sure that, you know, you're aware of it, is projects are awarded. I could notify you that the project's been awarded of this amount, and it's going down. I can loop you in on that, if that's something that the council, in this instance, really feels is important. If you don't vote it, we'll do what we can.
That, that process is going through the Building Commission, correct?
These projects are not under the Municipal Building or School Building Commission. These are being done, the school, the school facilities people, and the capital projects administrator, and the school business manager. Those, those are the folks that are managing these. They're, you know, an installation of a boiler, they're expensive, but they have people at the school that are helping to write stuff up and do that kind of stuff. They're not under the Municipal Building Commission.
So I think we want the detail.
Okay. I'm not sure what that means. You want me to inform you, or you're going to keep them in the separate accounts?
I think I want you to inform me, yes.
Which is fine.
Only because, in our past experience, whenever we've gone out to rebid, we've always wound up higher.
Yeah, and...
And that's going to cause a problem.
I hope we don't end up, because I feel bad. I'm the one that said you, I, I won't sign it.
So let's open up the communication links, and then I can inform my committee and keep them apprised.
Okay, keep them apprised as the awards come in? I'm not sure...
If there's an issue. Keep them apprised if there becomes an issue.
I'm confused as to what it is that you'd like for me to do. If this goes through in the, let me ask this. If this motion goes through, and everything's grouped into one, as projects are awarded, you would like me to notify the council of, this particular project has been awarded in this amount. This is how much money is left in the overall project.
Yes, exactly. That's exactly right.
Yep, okay, because I have set up sub-accounts, so that I can track that. Because I still want to know, how much was the boiler, how much was the roof, how much was the AC, all of that. Okay, that, yeah.
That's a symbolist firing an email off to Kat and he can circulate it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, I understand what you want. Okay?
Any other questions for? We hereby release you. Thank you for attending.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Deb.
So the motion's in order. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. From the Doc of April 4th, 2017, I entertain a motion to approve the administration's proposed program year 2017, Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Budget for the CDVG entitlement year July 1, 2017, through June 30th... two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, the proposed program year two thousand and seventeen annual action plan, and the request that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Attleboro, be authorized to submit to the Department of Housing and Urban Development the proposed C D B G budget and proposed activities to be undertaken during the upcoming C D B G entitlement year.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Cook.
You're welcome.
So, I think we all know that there's a public hearing, uh, that was held on April fourth, and it was closed. Um, um, it was wonderful for the director to appear in front of the council and put on her PowerPoint slides for this year. She did a great job.
Yep.
Um, this is largely a, um, benchmark, traditional benchmark that we do every year.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing unusual showing up this year that, um, should cause anyone any alarm. And, um, I'll entertain any questions? Yes, Councilor President.
Thank you, Chairman Conti. And I just wanted to, uh, repeat what I said during the public hearing, just disclosing my involvement with the Literacy Center, which is one of the, um, groups that is recommended to receive mon- uh, money by those who do this project. Um, and again, as a member of the Board of Directors of the Literacy Center, and also volunteer tutor, and these are unpaid positions, but I just wanted to go on the record, stating it, and paperwork was also filed.
Yep, I've added it to my notes.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, it will be official record.
Okay, great.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote of the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. That concludes the business to capital improvements and city development has to bring before the co- uh, committee. I entertain a motion to adjourn at nine oh seven.
Second.
Second, uh, motions in order. I declare capital improvements.
What a vote.
Development, general voting?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
I declare the capital improvements adjourned at nine oh seven. Thank you. All.
Well, good evening. I, uh, call the committee on transportation and traffic to order at nine oh eight. So, Vice President Denley is my secretary for this evening. There's, uh, three points of order to speak about. Um, Gary, I spoke with Gary Origen prior to the meeting this evening. Um, he would like to come in and have a updated conversation with regards to Angeline Street. Um, I did have a follow-up meeting with, uh, the, with Lance Hill, the D P W superintendent, members of the planning board, um, and what they're looking for, so you have, you, I would love to have some, I'm going to actually ask President Cook if we can schedule a six-thirty meeting prior next Tuesday, so that I can invite Gary in early. Um, in addition to that, um, the contractor is looking for a direction. Um, what way is the council kind of leaning? Um, there is some stormwater management that needs to be taken place. We need to actually, like, i- if, if, we would like to accept the street, to be able to accept the streets so that they can keep moving forward. Um, i- it, it was kind of, uh, you know, our, the public hearing with regards to this was quite a while ago, um, and it was very distinct that we were speaking about, like, the two parts of Angeline Street, one at the Washington side, uh, which needs to be accepted, as well as to figure out what our plan is for the Newport Ave side. Um, so, again, I'm, I'll ask Lance, and I will speak to Gary as well to come in, um, so that we have a better understanding of exactly what the contractor is looking for, 'cause we do need to accept the street, and then subsequently, uh, make a decision as it pertains to parking. Um, so, I, I will have to speak with President Cook again at some point, uh, with regards to this, but, um, I do plan on scheduling a meeting next week, and so, if you can take a look at your backup documentation and come in with any questions, concerns, or problems, that would be terrific. Thank you. Um, I entertain a motion to approve, uh, and amend the following ordinance. Ordinance relative to isolated stop signs, be it ordained by the municipal council, that section ten dash four point eleven, isolated stop signs, amended seven twenty-three, two thousand and fifteen, of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, amended one, three, two, seventeen, be amended by adding the following in alphabetical order, northbound drivers on Thatcher Street at Snell Street.
Second.
Thank you very much. This should sound rather familiar. Uh, we voted it way back in December, our directionals were crossed, so now we, we had the public hearing, we've closed the public hearing. Um, it is something that, um, it's, it honestly, it's just, we all approved it previously, so we just have to do it again with the appropriate ordinance. Um, any questions or concerns? I'm gonna forward the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve and amend the following ordinances. Ordinance is relative to isolated stop signs, be it ordained by the municipal council, that section ten dash four point eleven, isolated stop signs, amended seven twenty-three, two thousand and fifteen, of the revised ordinances of the city of Attleboro, amended one, three, two thousand and seventeen, be amended by adding the following in alphabetical order, westbound drivers on Edgewood Avenue at Magnolia.
Second.
Thank you very much, Vice President Denley. So, again, uh, this is, uh, we have to go through the same process again, um, just the, the westbound, eastbound, got mixed up the first time around. Um, I would just like to politely remind my fellow councils, again, we had a public hearing about this in December, we have one two weeks ago. Uh, we did have quite a showing as, as specifically as it pertained to Edgewood and Magnolia, and I do have a petition signed by the residents, uh, based on the request for this from way back when. Um, any questions or concerns? I move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There was one last little bit, I believe. Um, I do have one, a- again, um, I will, I would like to have, um, Lance Hill come in again, because I have from the docket of September second, two thousand and fourteen, the, um, Oak Hill Avenue Park Street configuration, um, in my opinion, as I drive through there all the time, it seems to be flowing smoothly, things look really good. I'll have a conversation with the police chief to see if there's any accurate accident reports. Um, if, uh, we are in agreement, I would be making a motion to strike that in two weeks at my next committee meeting. If anyone has any con- concerns, feel free to email me through ten, if that's something that you don't want to be taken care of, but other than that, I think, um, that area looks really good. Goes really well. The residents in that area, Ms. Jackson, those, they're happy. It's made a great improvement. Um, I don't know if I can lose my business here for this evening, so I call for an adjournment at nine thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned at nine thirteen, my very favorite number. Who's next?
I am. So, I'm calling Public Works to order at nine fifteen P M. Yay, you can do twenty minutes.
I was kidding.
Sure, I'm a guy. So, I have six motions this evening to bring out. From the docket of April eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, I entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen petition for joint pole relocations from Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. at Angeline Street and Newport Ave.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, this is just a relocation, this did not have to be, uh, public hearing for this to be held. And they are relocating it because they are putting in a bike path on the Newport Ave side of Angeline Street, so it's to accommodate the bikers and the walkers. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. My second motion for this evening.
Those will be death-defying, vice of us.
I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to transfer nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars from account six, zero, 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 dash, five, five, three, one, three, zero, wastewater enterprise fund chemicals, to account six, zero, 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 dash, five, two, four, zero, three, five, wastewater enterprise fund lift station maintenance, for the replacement of rubber roofs on two sewer pump lift stations.
Second.
Thank you. Um, so, there are two roofs that need to be replaced within the city. One of them is located on Rut- Rutledge Drive, and that roof there is over thirty years old, so I'm saying that that roof was pretty well-built back in the day, not like our schools. Um, and then the second is located on the Greenfield Street, which is over twenty years old, um, and they're in very need of being replaced. Any comments, questions? Anybody opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thirdly, I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to transfer four thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents from account six, one, zero, zero, dash, five, seven, eight, three, zero, zero, water enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer, to account six, one, zero, zero, dash, five, four, three, zero, one, zero, water enterprise fund supplies, building, maintenance, to replace the lighting at the Wading River Pump Station Building.
Second.
Thank you. We all know we all need to see down there. Um, the fixtures are inoperable down at that, uh, station, um, so, and they're finding that they are so old, and they're not working, that it's causing condensation, which can cause a big issue in the valves and the piping. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to transfer seven thousand forty-eight dollars from account six, one, zero, zero, dash, five, seven, eight, three, zero, zero, water enterprise fund reserve fund for transfer to account six, one, zero, zero, dash, five, four, nine, one, four, zero, water enterprise fund, small equipment to replace the dehumidifiers in the pipe gallery on West Street.
Second.
Thank you. This came in as actually one motion, but we divided it into two motions, as, um, they questioned last week. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the mayor's request to appropriate one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, and any other future grant amendments into fund three, one, zero, eight, chapter ninety projects, for the purpose of funding chapter ninety eligible projects, as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mastod.
Second.
Thank you. Um, we're pretty lucky, the chapter ninety local transportation aid, um, statewide is two million, two hundred million, so this is our portion, uh, for nineteen, for nineteen, yes, for two thousand and eighteen. Um, it's, in speaking with Lance, he hasn't put his whole list together on what streets he's actually gonna be working on yet, he hasn't finished that. They've been scheduling thi- they're looking at the scheduling things around the gas companies' projects, so we don't actually start doing a road, and the gas company's coming in to do the thing, then you gotta do the road over again, yada, yada, yada. Um, and sidewalks and drainage, this money will be spent for. I did ask him about one thing, 'cause Emory Street is a mess. It's like bumpity bump bump. That's gonna be done within the next two or three weeks, and that's actually being done with funds left over from last year.
Nice.
So, that's pretty good, 'cause that Emory Street is a mess. So, he's gonna plan on doing a lot of heavy paving throughout the city. Any comments, questions? Yes, please, Mr. Jackson.
I don't know if I need to or not, but I'd just like to disclose that I actually work for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, so, just wanna get that out.
So, can you get me a license plate? I'm just kidding.
Come on, uh, you're on the jokes tonight.
Credit?
It's easier than what I asked him last week.
Thank you. Thank you for your disposure. Um, thank you, and I, I will note, make a note of that. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen petition for pole locations for Massachusetts Electric Company, N Grid, request permission to remove solely-owned tree guy and install a thirty-five-foot solely-owned support pole, eight feet from the road, it says town property, I hate when they call it a town, city property, located across from Emory Street Pole, five, five, two, zero, southwest, forty-nine, L S, install thirty-five dash three pole, five, five, two, zero, eight, four.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, uh, public hearing was held last week. Um, nobody spoke in opposition, so. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. That's it for my motions, but I did wanna just remind you, we are having a public hearing next week, um, with regards to, um, the local limits, um, the ordinances of the perimeters and pollutants, and I had mentioned last week that I'd like to actually bring that out of committee, so I'm gonna ask, uh, President Cook, again, as a reminder, to have a committee meeting in between us voting it, 'cause I'd like to vote it out of committee next week, if I could, please. And that's all I have for this evening, and I wish all of my fellow councils a very happy Easter. I hope you get to enjoy your families on Easter Sunday.
Pass.
And I'd like to ask for an adjournment.
Second.